All right. S salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Watworth?
Here.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Arman?
Here.
Counselor Fabriol? Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Gooch? Counselor Rose?
Here.
May I have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved. Second with the correction on page four, under item 10, the second and the fourth paragraph, it should be Nancy Clow, C-L-O-W, instead of cloud.
All right. Moved by Deputy Mayor Watworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, noting the correction. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Watworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yeah.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Special order, Pollution Control Authority Agenda, item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Unfinished business. Item five, new business, item A, fiscal year 2015-2016 sewer works operation.
We can do that.
I can't do that yet, so I have a special.
On the test.
Right into citizen statements and petitions. Regular town council meeting, item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, permanent project building committee.
Permanent project building committee met last night, and in regards to the TBS work project, the architect has reported on the status of it, and panels should start to be installed on the standing seam roof. He said hopefully by the end of the week, next week, so that might be within two weeks. It's a conservative timeframe. They are making progress on it. There was discussion with the building committee. They have requested from the architect a copy of the work schedule that was established at the beginning of the project. Permanent project understood the standpoints that the council had from two weeks prior. Our discussion in regards to the contract substantially completed the entire work. The architect still has not looked at the contract to give an answer as to what exactly that meant. And permanent project is, has requested that they get that work schedule, and they know that they will not approve the next payment without that piece of information and having more discussion with the architect. They did approve the third payment last night, which was approximately $300,000, and there's about $600,000 left.
After the $300,000, there's still $600 to go?
Yes, yes.
Do we have any kind of clarity when it comes to a date of completion on this?
Just in reading the job notes that Mike sends us from the weekly meetings, they said that they are going to work on Columbus Day, so that's still a month, you know, it's the middle of October, so I guess, you know, it's still at least four weeks out, maybe possibly six.
So we're talking easily two months after the August 21st.
Yeah, they did not.
Be radical deadline.
They did not give any indication last night, and that was one of the reasons permanent project asked for that work schedule that was developed at the beginning of the project. The architect said that had not changed. Whatever was developed, which we have not seen, that had not changed.
He hasn't given us any kind of idea as to when he was going to, thought he would be complete, and that hasn't changed then? So he still has no idea?
Correct, he did not, he did not indicate that.
Even backing up to our last council meeting, when we had the, the guy.
Tom Keever, that's the architect.
Tom. He approved, he said that he approved the 300, this $300,000 they approved last night?
Correct.
Is what he was talking about at the last meeting?
Correct.
Because I thought we said that we weren't going to approve any more money until they were substantially complete, so I'm a little bit confused at the.
Well, that, that was, that, that $300,000 got them to what the architect has deemed 75% complete on the job.
So the $300,000 brings it, we're at 75% complete, there's $600,000 left to finish to do.
Correct, without any.
For 25%, and we're, and then the retainage, of course.
That includes the retainage.
So it's 20, so basically 20% left to do for $600,000.
Well, the 600 includes.
The retainage.
The retainage, it's the total amount that's due.
All right, I personally, I, I think you guys, I'm not comfortable with that, but I'm not on there, and if that's what he says, that's, I know, I heard him say it last week, but, I mean, working in construction, to me, that's, they're ahead of us.
So, and then, Mike did send an email today in regards to an issue that was, came up this, today at the school, in regards to an issue they had with the roofing project and the fire alarm system, but that.
I saw that.
That was resolved as of 5:30 this afternoon. Back online.
Thank you, Rose. Wondering what that.
So do we have any options when it comes to sanctions? I mean, it's in the contract, and, but what can we explore, you know?
Problem is, we don't owe them enough money to explore anything.
Well, we can still sanction them, though. I mean, at what point do we look at that?
I have a question for Tom.
We sort of discussed this last time.
Right.
We had, we were trying to figure out what the, I believe my opinion was that the contract refers to all the contract documents, and I think, does everybody have this?
Yeah, we should have.
Okay, so we have a more, the town manager apparently has located the definition of substantial, and we talked last time that the contract provides for daily fines, and ultimately if, I mean, we're only talking about delay in the work, we're not talking about the quality of the work, presumably. So I don't know how far off we are on the timetable, whether it.
Well, the contract originally said substantial completion of entire work by August 21st.
Right. And, and we also talked last time, I believe the architect was here, that, you know, part of his responsibility for seeing that the work is done in a timely fashion, including approving piecemeal, different parts that are done, it comes under the architect, and he, he said that he felt that they were performing satisfactorily, or in compliance with the paperwork, and that's our guy, so that's hard, that's going to be a hard hurdle to overcome. What is this, it's going to be like open?
It's a new system, so.
Are we having like an MRI machine? That's what it sounds like.
Anthony John, 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 John.
Where, sorry?
Is there a cell phone anywhere, the microphone's up there?
No.
Not anymore.
Is that, is, yeah.
So, so did Michael find this, or did the architect?
He supplied, Ryan asked for it, and he supplied it.
So, I don't know about the rest of it, but, you know, I'm going to read this, because this clown thinks that we are a group of idiots. So, he, he said substantial completion, and, so he sends us this thing, and it's nicely highlighted, and it's an AIA document, which we don't have the whole document, and it says, substantial completion is the stage in the progress of the work, and the work is designated, when the work or designated portion thereof is sufficiently complete in accordance with the contract document, so that the owner can occupy or utilize the work for its intended use. So guess what? He's saying that they didn't even have to start the job.
Right.
And he's saying they're substantially complete, because we're using the school, we could have used it before they started it, and we can use it here. So, working in construction, and Donnie does too, and we have two lawyers here, there is no way that that job today is substantially complete. So, and any attorney worth their salt could argue that. Now, they could pick this apart and say, well, because, you know, it isn't to utilize the building, because it had nothing to do with utilizing the building. It had whether the roof was done or not. And I take offense to that clown sending us this, thinking that, oh, okay, the kids are in the school, so the roof's substantially complete, and, and that's, that's just wrong. Now, having ranted on that, I, I agree, so now we've done, we got, we got a clown as an architect who says they're doing a good job, and they're substantially complete. And by the way, this is all my opinion. Then, we have, it's, the kids are in the school, and we've got this half-assed document that says, hey, the kids are using the building, so it's, it's substantially complete. Again, we have to do a better job as a council and as a building committee to get the right people in place early on, and have somebody, and probably we need to start going back to a clerk of the works, and having, having a guy that, that is in, on our side, because we don't have anybody on our side.
Well, we use.
But now, I said that, we need to just let them finish the roof, and, and hope for the best.
We need the right language the next time.
Well, in the context of what you're raising, I don't think the operative term here is occupy. It's not occupy and utilize the work, it's occupy or utilize the work for its intended use. Forget the occupancy, that we're occupying the building, just look at the second clause. Is the roof in such a condition?
That's good news.
That it is to be utilized for its intended use?
Right.
Or is it insufficiently complete, that it is not capable of being utilized for its intended use?
Oh, it's not.
In which case, it's not substantially complete. That or makes a big difference.
Okay. So, they didn't make it by August 21st, and, so you could buy them $1,000 a day?
I think there's an argument to be made. I don't think it's a slam dunk, but John is correct when he says if our architect.
Right.
Is saying it's substantially complete.
We have.
You've got an uphill battle walking into, I suspect this, this has an arbitration clause in it, that we couldn't go to court, we'd have to go to arbitration, you've got to convince an arbitrator that it's not substantially complete. If our architect walks in and says substantially complete, yeah.
I don't understand how our architect is saying it's substantially complete if there's 25% of the job left to do. To me, substantially complete is 98%, 99%, punch list.
Right.
By his own admission, punch list.
My whole project in construction, and I've signed these documents, you're down to a punch list.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, we, we don't have, apparently, we don't have a blog in the fight. We have a building that has part of a roof on it.
Then why waste any more time talking about it, I guess, right? Because we can't do, we're screwed.
I mean, they're not working, and they are moving.
Hopefully, they finish.
But.
Mr. Crossco, I know you're on the building committee, would you like to get up and say something?
Yeah.
Could you?
Rose, same meeting, I would like.
Could you come up to the microphone, though, and just give your name, please? Thank you.
Jack Crossco, member of the permanent project building committee. The architect claims that we are 75% complete, not 100% complete. We argued with him at the meeting about the 100%, you know, substantial completion, and what that means. Therefore, we approved paying the bill that was there, and put him on warning not to bring another one until we had the documents to show where the project should be going forward. We, as a committee, felt $600,000 being held back was plenty to cause the builder to.
Have incentive.
Yeah, incentive. The other thing is that the panels are to arrive Thursday or Friday of this week, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, for the, for the library.
And, and, yes, and those will go on, starting probably Monday or Friday, it depends when they get here. They will be staged coming in, so they won't be sitting out there in trailers, sitting out in a parking lot. As they use one trailer, they'll bring another one in. So I think we, we do have a legitimate thing about what substantial completion means, and maybe we should go after him. But the arch, the arch, the architect was really saying at the meeting, it's 75% completed, and that is what we were paying for with the bill. We could go after them for not being 100% completed, and in fact, we considered going to a council to get permission to hire the attorney.
Jeff DiNochio.
Yeah, Jeff DiNochio, who we've hired in the past, who specializes in that, after you guys go through John Jesmond, to go after him for the $1,000, but we can't do that until we have facts to support the case.
In terms of, in terms of use and occupancy, what if we were to have a hurricane or a snowstorm, which could happen in October?
It is.
Does that affect the, does that affect occupancy?
The roof is now complete.
So it doesn't.
It is solid.
So it's decorative?
It's decorative.
Okay, I mean.
I think I would have a different vision.
I mean, did, did, did anybody convey to the contractor that were concerned and that we?
Yes.
I think that's what our last meeting was, we wanted to make sure that they knew that it was an option of ours to go after the money for the penalty, and that we weren't looking to do that at this point, but, you know, let's go, let's finish the job, kind of thing, so, I, I mean, is there manpower on the job, or they?
Mike has been attending the weekly job meetings since.
Since that meeting, yeah, and the message was delivered loud and clear, and they put, they didn't put on, that, that first meeting I attended was right before the holiday weekend. They didn't have, but this past Saturday, they have working, working a shift on Saturday, so they, they definitely have that message now.
That's all we could do for now, I guess.
And prevent this from happening again.
Yeah. All right.
Item B, economics development commission.
They did not meet last night, they've rescheduled for September 23rd.
Park and Recreation.
Their meeting is next Monday to 23rd.
Item D, Police Commission.
Police Commission, yesterday, a lot of the agenda dealt with traffic issues. There's a particular concern about when the third rink goes in over 22, about traffic, about danger in terms of the entrance and exit, and I think what the commission would like to do is, after a couple of months of watching what happens once that additional rink is opened, to contact the state to, to do a study to make sure, because it is going to affect the traffic and, and the parking as well. The only other thing is, right now, we're down two officers, one who's out for back surgery, and our newest officer who cannot actually work alone yet until November, she still has to go through training. That's it.
Item E, Fire Commission. I did not attend, but I do know that they did go out to bid for the foundation, for the fire training facility, and at their meeting, there was a discussion on the pension, which I'm sure Anthony can explain to us later. Item F, Town, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask if I could make the presentation, but I think I should wait now, since we have to have the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay. 7:30, public hearing. North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority pursuant to section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statute will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, at 7:30 PM at the Town Hall Council Chambers, 909 Fox and Rose, North Branford, for the purpose of establishing a proposed sewer use fee for the 2015-16 fiscal year. The proposed charge is $400 per unit, and a copy of the proposed charges is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for inspection by the public, dated in North Branford, Connecticut, the second day of September, 2015, Water Pollution Control Authority, Town of North Branford. So, public hearing is open, and if anyone has.
Good evening, I'll just say a few words. The proposed sewer use rate is proposed to increase from the current rate of $375 in the 2014-2015 year, up to $400 per unit. Really, the driving force, again, I touched on this at the last meeting, our operating costs haven't really changed all that much, we're, we're pretty locked in, with a, we're locked in with a contractor for operations, there's a minor increase, annual increase, there's normal little increase in terms of electrical cost, that they fluctuate a little bit, and our user fee that we pay to other municipalities that we discharge to varies a little bit, and it depends on the type of year we have. Generally, if it's a dry year, because we have a, basically a newer, tighter system, we usually, our costs may go down a little bit, if we have a wet year, they generally go up a little bit. That's just sort of a thing that happens on, on the annual basis, but they're, they're pretty steady. Our, our bigger driving force is our, we have a capital fund that we've been utilizing to fund some of our intermunicipal costs for their capital improvements and treatment plant and the like. Those, that capital fund is basically, the wells running dry, so we have to fund a little bit more from that capital fund, not, not in this year, but in, in future years. And again, the driving force, we're trying to maintain an ending undesignated fund balance efficient if we have any major problem, because that's the driving thing, whatever we set, we've been trying to maintain that ending undesignated fund balance, and it has been declining over, over the years, and we anticipate in coming years, we'll have to dip into that and our capital fund to cover some of the capital costs for the intermunicipal capital improvements. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, Kurt.
Are there any public comments? Okay, have any more?
I'll move to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Angeloni to close the public hearing. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Watworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Gooch?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Rose? All right, item I, adoption of the operating budget and user fee.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority acting in its capacity as the sewer authority for the Town of North Branford hereby adopts the attached sewer budget and establishes a sewer fee of $400 per unit for the 2015-16 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
No.
Deputy Mayor Watworth?
No.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Gooch?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Adoption of capital budget. Item two.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority acting in its capacity as the sewer authority for the Town of North Branford hereby adopts the attached sewer capital budget for the 2015-16 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
No.
Deputy Mayor Watworth?
No.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Gooch?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Branford Sewer Treatment Capital Costs.
This is an item we talked about a little bit at the last meeting. Basically, the Town of Branford has come up with a capital improvements plan for upgrades to their sewer treatment plant. The treatment plant was upgraded in the late 90s, thereabouts, and that's one of the capital items we're, we're paying basically for our share of improvements over a 20-year period to Town of Branford. What the Town of Branford has done, though, in the interim, you know, the, the plant is, it's been in operation for a number of years, they've looked at and identified some capital needs, you know, maintenance items that they, they want to take care of before they become bigger problems. They've identified about $6 million worth of improvements that they propose to perform the upgrades to over the next five or six years. They're all, they're listing on the last sheet of the, of the handout, but, but basically, they're all sewer treatment plant related items, where they're looking to, to make those upgrades. Basically, what the Town of Branford is proposing to do is fund them from a couple sources, basically, about half the cost from the annual operating budget, and then they're also, they're funding half of it from a capital fund that they have, that they're transferring, basically, they have about 3 mil, 3.2 million in excess funds that they're looking to utilize towards making those treatment plant upgrades. Initially, they, they're funding the improvements themselves over a one-year period, and they talked, Mike and Nancy and I met with them about a month ago, and, and again, we asked, he certainly said we could not afford to pay anything over, over one-year period, our share of the cost, which is roughly $300,000, more or less. We, the request was that we pay this over the life of where they're making the improvements over that five to six-year period, and delay it until they actually start doing the projects, delay the year to start paying that off. They agreed in principle, but they asked that we get together and have some formal agreement between both parties to identify the work and a payment schedule for the proposed improvements. So, that's where we are at this point. And I've included in their recommendation that we authorize the town manager and the town attorney to basically work with the Town of Branford, come up an agreement and bring it back to WPCA for review and subsequent action.
Where is their treatment?
Some of the detail that we, we have to, between Anthony, myself, and Mike, work out in terms of.
Where is their treatment, Mike? I'm sure you drew.
Down on the.
On the way?
Down by the dock.
Right.
Down by the, down by the boudyard.
Oh, is it, okay. Are they fully sewed in Branford?
Pardon me?
Are they fully sewed?
I think they're about 95%, more or less, but they're not fully.
There's not one inch of sewer in Stony Creek.
Oh, that's right, too.
And also up Branford Hill, some of them back neighborhoods still have septic.
Or for Mill Road.
I mean, but, but they're.
But they're 90.
Much higher percentage than we are, certainly, and.
We have, yeah.
What is our percentage? Where do you go at, Ken?
I mean, ballpark, we're probably about. I mean, ballpark, we're probably about 35-40%.
We're 35-40%?
Roughly.
Okay.
And if you look at our household, and again, the, and actually, the majority of properties that have the ability connect have connected. It's taken a number of times, but with anybody selling a house now, the driving force is the mortgage companies. If sewers are available, they'll make the property owner connect at this point. But again, that's, there's some details to be worked out. We're just trying to move this forward in terms of coming up together with some type of agreement that spells out how they make the improvements, how we pay for them, and when we pay for them. And again, the preliminary discussion was over a five-to-six-year period as they make the improvements. What Branford is trying to do is avoid the bonding issue, more pay-as-you-go versus paying over a 20-year period. In reality, at some point, they, along with North Haven and Great New Haven, WPCA we go through, they usually come to a 20-25-year period, and there's major improvements required at their treatment plant, just like a school, all these things. There's a lot of the chemicals at these facilities that require upgrades and repairs at that point. What they're doing, they're doing the right thing from an operation standpoint. They're trying to take care of things before they become major problems. Just like we're trying to do with our pumps, we try to replace, with our pump station, we try to replace pumps before they become a problem. It's in the budget to do Mansfield Drive pump station, replace a couple of those pumps this year, which we will do. So, we do it before we have a problem, because if we have a problem with this pump station, with a pump, it can be a major problem. And again, the impact, back to the impact on the user fee, the reality of, that will probably be a $25 per year impact on our user fee over that period.
So, $25 every year for five years?
Every year for the five years. It may be $20, I mean, but I'm, in round numbers, just call it $25, that pretty much is what we're looking at.
But since this is a five-year project and these are estimated costs, what guarantee or what can we put into the language so that estimated $300,000 doesn't all of a sudden become $600,000?
Well, that's exactly our concern, to make sure those items are looked at, addressed. Again, we're only at the talking stage at this point.
And Branford doesn't want to see that happen either.
No, no, I mean, and hopefully, the costs will go down, but I mean, and again, from our side, if they're able to do it last, or for some reason, they don't do anything, one of those items in that period, we don't want to be paying for it.
Right.
I mean, that, we want to make sure it gets incorporated into any memorandum of understanding or agreement going forward. If we have obligations, if we share in the use of it, then we have to share in the cost of it, but we don't want to be stuck out, because the way they're going to do this, they're not waiting till they're all done and then bonding a final number. They're looking to set, pretty much set the money aside and spend it as they go, but we need to make sure there's accounting in place for that and make sure that the actual, you know, the expenses are the actual expenses, so we're not, again, paying for something that may not be done.
So, the motion that's presented to us is basically just to allow the town manager and the town attorney to enter into this memorandum of understanding, which will come back to us.
Yeah, to try to negotiate and, to negotiate agreement with the Town of Branford for payment of the capital improvements for the treatment plant upgrades, and that the agreement be brought back, brought to the WPCA for review and subsequent action, whatever action that will be, depending on how it looks, but just to get the process going.
Right.
And that's so everybody's aware, I mean, this is something that will have a big impact on this.
Kurt, this is a little bit, a little bit off, same subject, just a little bit off what we're talking about. So, the pump stations, when they're redone, do just the people who use the pump station pay for that, or does everybody in town who's on sewer pay for that?
In our town?
In our town.
In our town, that's part of the operation of the system, and we've got five pump stations, and the majority of everybody uses some phase of them. We got a couple down the Branford section, the 139, Tun Lake Road, and there's a good portion that you, that use that pump station, and then three up in Norfolk. But they're, they're part of the overall system. I mean, that's our sanitary sewer system.
And nobody in town pays for that? There's no tax dollars that pay for that?
There's no tax dollars, it's strictly in the sewer user fee. The initial installation was part of the assessment when they were putting it.
And general taxation paid like 20% of that?
I think, going back, it was about 10% on the town side at that point. And the other thing, back to sort of the capital cost, we had the initial sewer system, everybody paid their assessments towards the capital costs of the system, then there were extensions over the years, and we initially had supplemental sewer assessments that went into this capital fund, and then special connect, we changed it to special connection fees, which pretty much went into that fund. Those funds have been funding the improvements at the Branford sewage treatment plant upgrade, the North Haven sewage treatment plant upgrade, because they're part of the overall system that we're part of. That pool is the one I'm telling you is running dry. We've spent that money, because if we didn't utilize that money, that user fee would be a whole lot larger than it has been in the past. So, it's helped a lot, but again, the wells run dry, or is running dry, and will within the next couple of years.
Did, nothing ever happened? We never got a sewer payment over there on, for lack of whatever it's being called, the City Mission Project?
They haven't, they're not, we have an approval, but they have to come back, but they're not, they're not fully there yet, because they'll all have to pay.
Because that would have gone into the...
That will go in. When the ICE pavilion recently came in, and they did their addition, they paid a $30,000 special connection fee, which went into that fund. But we're running, there's less and less properties, you know, with the ability to do that, to, that weren't initially anticipated to be sewed, and then tying it at some future date. But it helps, but it's not a big number. It's not like it was in the 80s and 90s when all sorts of things were going up and reflecting a lot of fees.
Next.
So, again, the suggestion motion, basically, just would authorize town manager, town attorney to start to negotiate an agreement, and then bring it back to the Water Pollution Control Authority.
So, like five payments of $60,000 per year?
Rough, rough numbers, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority authorizes the town attorney and town manager to negotiate an agreement with the Town of Branford for payment of capital improvements to the Branford Sewage Treatment Plant, and the agreement be brought back to the Water Pollution Control Authority for review and subsequent action.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Arman. Roll call.
Mayor Candy-Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Bucci.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
I think already did six, didn't I?
Yeah.
All right. Now, we're back to seven F, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
This is show and tell. Mr. Mayor, may I make a presentation at this time while I still have a captive audience?
You should.
Thank you. I have a trustee, I feel badly that you're not sitting in a chair.
I think I gotta move a little. This is gonna be good. Do you have the white? Wait a minute, we didn't get our, we didn't get our remote back yet?
Down, down one. Enter the middle. Enter again.
Every time you gotta do this?
Well, the remote is missing. So, normally, you don't have to do this.
Manual's gonna be me in North Branford.
Bring it back, Brad.
What, I gotta do, you're gonna be locked out with it. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. You can't. Me and hour here.
Go to zero.
Did you call?
Mike was...
Is it a case where the remote is more expensive than a system?
First of all, I'd like to thank the town council for allowing the committee to make this presentation this evening. If you recall, it was probably early spring when we talked about having a committee so that we could have a plan and vision for the town, and come up with some ideas in terms of what we need within the next 10 to 15 years or more. The committee has met every two weeks since the beginning of May, and I have to thank the folks, and I'll recognize them in a few minutes, but what we started with was identifying needs for the town and for education, and meeting with lots of people, and I'll discuss that as we go along. As a result of the many meetings we had, our discussions, we developed a mission statement to develop a long-term plan for municipal and educational facilities and amenities that serves our community efficiently and effectively. That's our mission, our vision. The committee, I'd like to recognize from the town council, Rose Angeloni, Dan Arman, Vincent Caprio, Board of Ed, Marcy Anofrio, Diane Bumbach, Lou Paternoster was the alternate. I particularly want to thank Mike and Anthony for all their help in attending all our meetings, and Anthony for being my helper this evening with the presentation. Okay, what were some of the needs that we identified? One of the first needs, based on talking to all of the department heads, talking to the superintendent, talking to our state representative, and talking to our state senator, we felt these are the, these are the needs that are the most important right now. First of all, the police station. The police station is in dire need of renovation, dire need. It looks beautiful, you drive by the police station, it looks like a great building, but if you go through a tour of that building, there's a lot of deed there. The second thing is uniting the town. The question is, what is central campus that included the town hall, ambulance services, the police station, and the Board of Ed central office unite the town? There's always been talk about that. We do have open space in some town property, how can we best utilize the Swaycheck, Auger, and Muddy properties? Those are our first needs. The next one, and this particularly came from the department heads, there's a great need to update equipment, particularly in public works, they got you in there, and public safety. There are a lot of, lot of needs there in terms of equipment to meet current standards. Storage, I was, I was really amazed, I don't think there wasn't one department head that didn't bring up storage in terms of a very important need, particularly in this building. There's a, there are a lot of offices where things are just stacked all over the place. A marketing campaign, we, North Branford needs a campaign to draw businesses and visitors. You know, I often get those brochures, particularly in the sound, and you have, you know, come visit these towns, and you see all the Madison, Guilford, Old Sabre, whatever. I'd love to see one where there's a page with North Branford in there. So, that was another need that we felt as we, as we discussed this. And the sewers, if we're going to entice business into this town, we need more sewers, particularly on Route 80. Okay, so there's our current town hall. So, if we decided to go to a municipal, some kind of a municipal complex, we could have Mike standing in front of that complex, but I'd probably be in a nursing home at that point. But I pictured Mike standing there. Okay, what do we need in version? Okay, what about the police station? Okay, it was originally constructed in the 1970s, it was remodeled in the early 90s. What are some major areas? The squad room, the squad room, in most police departments, it's a squad room, it's for roll call. In this particular town, it does everything. They have to have meetings in there, people have to have investigations where they should be in a private room. There's just a lot of need in terms of a better squad room. Office space, again, and storage. I found out that the storage area in the police department, on the, in the basement, there's, things are stacked up, and water is seeping up as you walk, as the lieutenant explained to me, he walks into the storage room, property room, and he's squishing on tiles because of water coming up from underneath. I went out and toured that facility, and believe me, I saw a lot of that problem. The locker room, the men had to give up, the women, they had to just recently give, as I mentioned last meeting, the women's locker room, because they were using it as their closet, because now we have a female police officer, they had to get out of there. But locker rooms are in need of, you know, dire need of repair, and the shower facilities. The sally port, it's, it's being used for a lot of major storage, shouldn't be there, and it should be the kind of a sally port that you can go, you can drive right through. Ours is not that way. The policeman has to drive into it and then back out into a parking area, not a garage that we don't have. The radio and server room have a lot of needs in terms of, mostly in terms of air conditioning and humidity, et cetera. The 911 room, I think as, and I'm sure the fire chief would agree with me, as things change and as the state changes rules and regulations, even though there are going to be some upgrades to that room, at some point, there are going to be some greater needs, and we, I don't know if we're going to be able to meet them with our current facility. So, that's one of the first major area. North Branford High School. You notice, I didn't have a picture of the police station, because I almost got killed trying to take one, but I was able to get a picture of the high school, which was built in 1964. Now, we realize as a committee that the only way you're going to work on the high school is to do a renovators new. It would be very foolish, obviously, because you have a brand-new roof at the high school, so it would never make sense to have a new, brand-new building. North Branford High School is probably the only high school in the entire shoreline area that hasn't either been renovated or knocked down and rebuilt as a new building. I think it's time for us to take a look at that tired, tired building. At this time, we're trying, we've been trying to do some projects within the building, within the high school, but we're not getting any reimbursement for those projects. For example, there was a big issue about the bathrooms, there's asbestos abatement, storage, the kitchen, the science labs, the library, media center, it's not the heart of the school. If we could do something here, if we could do a renovators new project, we could hopefully get some reimbursement from the state, and we've talked to our state senator and our state representative, and they're certainly, they certainly are willing, more than willing to help us do that. Okay, we all, we didn't look just at major projects, we're not, we want a committee that was looking just, you know, to put a building up somewhere, but we also feel that by reviewing the surveys that we gave out to department heads and meeting with the department heads, there are a lot of things that we should, as a council, consider when we're doing a budget, an operating budget. I think that sometimes we, unfortunately, we finalize a budget, and then the next month, a department head comes up with something they need. Hopefully, if we could, you know, have this plan and have the results of the survey, and you have that in your packet, we would have a better understanding of what the needs are when we're developing an operating budget. Okay, how does this all work in terms of our existing debt service? Well, according to Mark Chapman, our debt service guru, okay, in fiscal year 2017-18, we begin the decline, and it significantly will decline for 13 years. So, we should be able to hopefully take advantage of the drops in the debt for the town if we can start now planning to do some of these projects and be ready in 2017. if we can start now planning to do some of these projects and be ready in 2017-18 or 2018-19. And as I said, something like a municipal center, I think we'd have to probably wait until the mid, when I'd be in the nursing home, probably 2025, 2026. But according to our debt guru, debt service guru, we're certainly on a decline starting in 2017-18. But you can't all of a sudden renovate a high school if you haven't had the time to prepare to do your ed specs or to do a design, looking at what you do for a new police station. Okay, what are the proposed projects? Well, we already know there's a $5 million project, the one that's, the 2015-16 for the roads. Based on our research of other towns, we believe that a new police facility would cost about $12 million, and we mainly base that on Old Saver, which is pretty much like North Branford, and their cost was $10 million. So we figure with changes in terms of increases, et cetera, it could probably be about $12 million. A sewer line extension from Fowler Road, perhaps on Route 80, to the Guilford Town Line. We've been talking, when talking with our state rep and our state senator, we could probably do a lot of it through steep grants. So that's something that we would keep in mind as we're considering going on with our projects. Now, the high school renovation. There are two scenarios. With a 50 cent, I'm sorry, 50% reimbursement, the net is $27 million. With a 40% state reimbursement, 33. The thing that's going to affect this is the number of students at the time, and also the fact that the high school and the middle school are connected with the auditorium. So in terms of total, what's the word I'm looking for? Space. That will affect what our reimbursement would be. But we certainly would get reimbursement, and we have really a lot of concern and interest on the part of our state rep and senator to help us to get as much as we can with that reimbursement. Okay, what would be some timeframes? If we could do this, looking at what our goals are, what the impact would be, if we could do a renovate as new project for the high school around 2017-18 or 18-19, again, we'd have to start planning now. Looking at a police station, looking at a design, maybe eventually incorporate the ambulance and emergency center building. At this time, we'd hopefully do that in 2017-18. But anything centralized, we know in terms of a complex, a municipal complex, would have to come in the mid 20s. Now, here's the question for the council, and I'm going to ask to bring this up later on during the actual new business. If we could start planning now, what we'd be asking is the Board of Ed, using the funding that's allocated right now for renovating the high school bathrooms to begin educational specifications. If the council goes along with that, I would go to the Board of Education, and we have people from the board that are on the committee, and ask the board to consider that. In terms of the police station, there's money in the capital improvement funding, about $100,000, to hire a design engineer to begin the first steps in terms of the police station as the first step in a municipal center. Again, a centralized facility would have to come sometime later. Any questions? I've got you all dazzled. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Very good.
Nice job.
Thank you.
No, thank you, that was very good.
I ain't coming up with something in the new business.
Yeah, I think so, there's something else over there.
I think the middle one. There it is. Still not all over there. That's the last one.
Oh, I hit two. Okay. Item G, Board of Education and Town Council Subcommittee. I believe that was.
That was scheduled for last night, but because we had to finalize, the whole committee had to finalize for today's presentation, this meeting is going to be rejected.
Item A, Town Manager's Report. Item A, Update of Center Plan Proposal.
Yeah, we have, John has received and gone over the purchase-sales agreement. And I know that he distributed, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that in terms of his comments. I'm working with Jason Rudnick of the Center Plan. He's been in a couple of times to talk about the actual concept plan that we talked about last time, and they're working on a variation. What's holding it up is the meeting that they want to have with DOT. As we know, the site is not the easiest site in the world because of the second cut that we're looking for off of 139. They recognize that as well, and it kind of plays into how the site is laid out, what the traffic pattern is, how many parking spaces, and things of that nature. And they're hoping to get that meeting and come to the table with DOT to look at what their proposal is more than, more than what we had done with Yale back several months ago. So they're looking at that, trying to, you know, pursue, I mean, even, again, that whole layout, where do you put the open space? How do you orient the buildings, the topography? We know we've got issues with the hill and the valley and the corner that is, you know, pretty steep. So there's some issues that they're trying to get back to a rendering, if you will, on a site plan, concept. And maybe, you know, they've taken our, you know, information, and maybe they, what they're going to do is maybe break up into two or three buildings, maybe move around, or just continue, keep it as a one large block and reorient it on the site. But I think at this point, we're going to need to get them back to the table, not only to talk about John's comments on the purchase and sales agreement, but also to figure out what's important to the concept for, from the town's perspective in terms of keeping the open space, whether or not, you know, the residential is something we hold tough on and say, you know, that's, you know, we've got to have that if we need to have that. And I think we need to get back to the table and talk about what those components of that retail mixed use is going to bid. See if.
So what happened to their first proposal?
Well, it's a collaborative process. So they put forth a box and put in what they thought we were looking for. And now they're, you know, looking at coming to the table to tweak that and find out what we can live with and what we demand, I guess.
Did you give us this, do we have this new proposal, John, or not?
No, I haven't, you mean the subject matter, or how they're gonna?
Yeah, I mean, I thought originally they were going to give us like $20,000, which, and then they were going to get it back if nothing happened.
Well, that's what this is about. That's what my review of the agreement.
But I think you're missing out, and I don't know why it wasn't distributed to everyone. I don't think the rest of the council has the proposed contract that Center Plan submitted, do they?
I, I don't think so.
No.
Oh. That should have been disseminated to each of you, but John and I have a copy of it. And although it's unverbatim with that glossy little folder that they passed out when they first made the proposal, essentially, the terms that are in that glossy folder are the terms that are in their contract. So there's a very fundamental question here, whether or not this is a deal from a business point of view. Before we get into the nuts and bolts, is it a business deal that the town finds appealing?
So, yeah, we need to look at that deal, because wasn't their deal, like, they were gonna, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was a long time ago, they were going to give us $20,000?
Precisely.
And if they couldn't do anything?
No, they're not giving us to put it in escrow.
Right, and if they couldn't do anything at the end of the year or the end of whatever, they get their $20,000 back?
Correct.
So that's just a bad deal.
It's an option to buy the property. That's why I criticize it as 41.
Right, like I said, if you're going to sell the property, put it for sale. You, you, you know, I mean, this is like, for them, there's no, again, they have no dog in the fight, they have nothing to, to, they put $20,000 in escrow, and they don't lose anything, you know? The, yeah, if you're Donald Trump, who he's been bankrupt a few times, okay, he's on top of the world now, but, you know, as a developer, you're a gambler, and they're making the town gamble in this, where the town shouldn't be gambling. The town should either put the thing for sale or, or not. But we shouldn't be tying it up to somebody for nothing. And that's, you know, I've said that from the beginning, and I think that this council needs to, like you said, before you get into the nuts and bolts, is this a good business deal for the town?
The one open item right now is what they keep promising Mike, which is a tweet designed for what it is they want to put on the site. That we haven't seen yet. I don't know if we'll ever see it, or presumably will, since they represented it well. However, right now, with the contract they've submitted, we have no assurance whatsoever that they're going to build anything either remotely, like what the Yale plan proposed for that site. Right now, what we're looking at is a proposed contract that says they'll pay $1 million if a whole bunch of factors come into play in their favor over the course, and it's more than a year, it's closer to two years, during which time they will have at risk $20,000 to maybe $30,000. And under that contract, there's absolutely no assurance that they build either what they showed on their proposal that they came in with several months ago, or anything else for that matter. So as a council, I don't, I've had a little bit more involvement in this than the other counselors. I don't want to try to make the decision for the council. But what I think you have to consider is that there are people like Dudley Harrison who finds this whole process objectionable. At some point, if we're not getting the type of development proposal we asked for when we hired Yale to formulate those plans, are we better off scrapping this idea, turning that into a town green, putting a gazebo or something else on it, or whatever is appropriate for the town, and creating a green space in the center of North Branford? And I'm finding that more and more appealing as this thing is dragging on.
Well, Steve, we don't know where I'm on that, but also, in that contract, and I haven't seen it, but I would think that the whole council should get the contract, Michael. Even if John's looking at it, you know, normally the council gets it and sends things to John. But, so I would expect that the rest of us will be getting that.
You should have had it before tonight.
So, having said that, I'm sure that in there, the cost of remediation of any bad stuff is going to come off of that $1 million.
Yes, we're paying for it.
So, again, I think that if we're going to do it, whether it goes to a green or going to go up for sale, the town should. Clean it up. Clean it up. Then we know what we have. We have a clean site. It may have more value than $1 million and to more people than, you know, people looking at a 1920s building that, you know, who knows what's in there? And a gasoline spill or something where an old gas tank was, and who knows how expensive it is. But this proposal is dumping it all on us. And again, going back to a developer, if you're a developer worth your salt, you can walk through that building with your remediation person, and you'd have a hard number on what it's going to cost to do it. And you'd either buy the property, or you wouldn't. You know, the town is holding, we're taking all of the responsibility, and, I don't know, we need to, we need to see the contract. I think while you're waiting to see the contract, I actually did think that you had it. But even if you just read the page and a half or whatever that I sent, that'll give you a preview of some of the, I suppose, less exotic parts of this question. In other words, in my mind, which do you want to look at first? The project that's going to be agreed upon, you know, how glorious that's going to be? Or before you even get to that, do you want to have a contract that allows them to fully assign this deal to anybody they want, without any control by the council? You won't necessarily be dealing with these people. And as you pointed out, Al, they have the right to investigate the property, and if any remediation has to be done, under the terms of the contract as written, we would have to do it. So for a minor, one minor thought would be that we'd have the option to not do it. And basically, in the contract, if it turns out that they come upon something that's, you know, going to be an extraordinary expense. Also, harkening back to our experience with the roof of the high school and what's substantial, basically, there are two six-month periods that are involved here for them to check things out. But there's no stages within those six months. So they could go for, it's open-ended, basically. They could go to the very end of the six-month period. We should want to make sure that due diligence means that they are progressing in orderly steps. So that may be totally unattractive to them, and I don't know. But I think that the town has, as written, much too much exposure for no kind of money. And if they're agreeable to the things that I see in the, in the contract right now, then I think you're prepared to go to the next step and see what it is that you want them to do, and if they'll do it. But of course, if they can assign this project to someone else, you lose control over that. So, anyway, the point is, you should, you should get the contract, but even while you're waiting to get the contract, there's enough in that page or so that alerts you to certain provisions that have to be amended. So then the only other comment I'll make is, you know, for Michael and our purchasing agent, when you wrote this RFP or whatever, you, there's not a real estate transaction or deal in the world that doesn't have a deadline. And, you know, I happened to miss the meeting when you voted to go forward with them. But it's open-ended. There's no end. And there's nothing like that on this earth, in the world of, you know, time is money, real estate's money. And it should have been, from that proposal, it should have, there should have been on our end, you will sign a contract with the town within 30 days or within whatever. I mean, this thing is open-ended. We're going on, you know, never mind their year and a half or two years, we're going to be a half a year before we get any information back from them, from when the council chose them as the preferred builder. Well, you're right, but in fairness to, to Michael, we said, look, you give us what your thoughts are. This is, this is their proposal. This is not a negotiation. There was no attempt to negotiate with them. Why is that? Well, because we just wanted to get them to put the ball in play, you know?
The negotiating team getting at the table to tell them, listen, this is a collaborative effort. We said to them, you provide us with your first, your first stab at this contract. We said, we agreed to go to a purchase and sales agreement. They're going to put it forward, they have. Now, I think, as I've said, for us to get back to the table and say, listen, everything John just laid out, from saying, you know, timelines, to whether or not we're going to do the environmental, and to, you know, what we, allow them to sign it, and we talk about the actual concept and say, you know what? We must have a residential component, or whatever else we want. But it's our turn from the negotiating team at this point, in my view, to counter and say, listen, we need to be at the table, because we need this, this, and this. And to your point out, that's the time to put in those, as John pointed out, the milestones, if you will, within that six months that you want to have something done, and put those timetables on. And I think that's, that's what they're waiting for us to look at this and then come back and go meeting together and say.
Well, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, that's what we, we need to do.
Okay, that's negotiation. So that's the, that's the easy part, but I think, I said the easy part. Now I'm believing that you should first get a commitment to do the type of plan that you want to see there. That, and we could get all these fundamentals down, and it's still going to be what they want to put there and not what you want to put there. So I think, conceptually, perhaps, the first thing is for the Town Council to decide whether they're going to stick with a residential, a residential component, or if they're going to want a certain plan that they're not proposing right now.
So did I hear you right, or did I, and again, because I haven't seen their proposal, they, they have language in there, so if somebody comes along and buys it, they're out?
They, they can sell it. They can assign it to anybody they want. There goes your preferred developer. But, you know, sooner or later, you guys will start listening.
I mean, who's going to buy it?
I mean, who's, who's gonna buy it without, no one's gonna approve anything on that property, pretty much, other than a gazebo. So, who'd buy it, you know?
And we'll put horseshoe pits in it.
Yeah, or a bocce court, you know?
All right. But I honestly do think though, Joe, and I, you know, I think all of us should get a copy of the council and then have the proposal, and then, you know, maybe we need to come up as a town council without we're- Not, well, not, I would say, you know, not before we give them, you know, we have our attorney's observation, Joe's observation, and throw it back at them and see how they respond, you know? I mean, what does that cost us?
I think you gotta, I think you have to decide on what you want to buy. If you want to buy Mercedes, or if you want to buy a ship-
Well, we're not willing to buy the product as written now.
That's what I'm saying. And I think they understand, they, I presume they understand that, but at the same point, I think it's, clearly is our responsibility to tell them what we want.
Right.
And-
Which is what I thought the RFP kinda outlined. I was mistaken, I guess, but, well, they didn't look at it.
No, they, they changed it.
Right. So we have to walk back towards the RFP, and what we outlined in the RFP, and then show them, you know, our observations, and if they're not willing to talk with us after that, then we have to exercise other options, right? But cutting loose now, before, without giving them the option of responding to our criticism, our observations, I don't know, seems pretty hasty to me.
See, the RFP, though, never, it never had a chance.
Why?
And I said this all along, anybody that's gonna buy that, getting back to a developer worth their salt, they're gonna look at the zoning regulations in the town, and that's what they're gonna look at. And I said that before we even got started.
They're gonna wanna do what's economically viable.
Right.
And so what we're talking about-
The RFP is not.
Whoa.
And that's why you only had one group that came in with a pretty lame proposal.
Something can be done there, probably without residential units, but that's economically viable property, though, you know, subject to modification, but not so far that it's not what we want, right?
Right. I don't think it's that far off from the charrette process, the RFP process, that says, you know, listen, it wasn't, first and foremost, it was, I think everybody agreed, we didn't want one big box retail and call it a day.
Right.
They wanted mixed use with, you know, three, three shops that they're proposing, or three, or box, a smaller one and a restaurant, if we can get that with open space component and residential. And now, they've come back and said, you know, residential, even though you and your RFP through Yale think that this is going to drive this for us, we see some issues with it. They've raised some issues. So they're just raising the question of whether or not they can take the residential component out. We can come back and counter and say, "No, we think it's very important to the vibrancy of the, of the project," or tell us why this would be a hurdle, what, what it would look like and how it would be a quality project, okay, and, and what it would look like. And I think that's with a tweaking component.
And change a lot of that language.
Modification and so forth. So, there, there are some issues with that site. It's not an easy, easy site, we all know that. So they've got to, they've got to sharpen their pencils and they've got to do some work. And that's why I think we've got to bring the negotiating group back to the table and say, clearly, from the council, unless, unless you were to say, "Right now, open space is not an issue, we can go, you know, we can forego that." I think that's an important piece. I think that should be in. Residential, you might say, "Okay, that's not a make or break of this proposal." Other than that, whether it's a thirty, you know, twenty thousand for this box and ten thousand for the next one, and, you know, five thousand square foot for the restaurant, I don't know that it matters to the council what the actual components are, as long as you get that mixed use. I mean, I'm open to-
That's, that's closer to the way I see it.
Open to ideas and suggestions.
So we'll cut them loose at the next meeting.
What, you know, what your rush is, you know, you put a for-sale sign on that property, it could sit forever fit. And, or we have to decide how we're gonna pay for, you know, raising the buildings and remediation and regrading, et cetera. That's an expensive proposition as well.
You're paying for it anyway.
Right.
Well, we're paying for it. We're paying for it without any kind of, anything back to the town, right? So I would rather pay for it and have something coming back to the town in the future. In the short term, at least, get back with these guys and negotiate with them and tell them what our, what our criticism is, and see if they're willing to play ball. If they're not, then that's fine, we have to go forward, but-
Yeah, I mean, that's the issue.
Not having that component in there is really short-sighted, I think.
There's a value, there's an intrinsic value in passive recreation and having a town center, where the memorial parade can convene without having people standing on Route Eight. There's a value in having a green spot in the center of North Branford with either a gazebo or something of that nature on it. There's a value in having a place where people can sit on a park bench and read a book.
Absolutely.
Though today, they may not show up in the budget, but there's value.
Well, absolutely. Whether this is the right place for that or not, I don't know.
It's one of the few places that lends itself to that in the center of North Branford.
That's why, like, what I was saying might not be a bad idea to-
Level it.
Level it. I mean-
That's also-
Because we're, we're getting one way, you know-
Trying to address that, though, is why that open space component towards what we do is so important. And we're not willing to forego that. I mean, that was a part of the, the whole process.
Yeah.
So we're not willing to let that go.
We're not willing, some of us aren't willing to admit that that whole process was a waste of time. We'll get there. Next meeting.
Or, Joe.
All right, let's move on to, um-
Everything in this town is a waste of time.
Item B, rebound notes.
I know.
Presentation set for October sixth, two thousand fifteen, with Dave Ambrose.
Yeah, I put some notes in there that Dave's been working on, reval. He'd like to, I think it would be important to have him here and schedule for the October six. I'm suggesting the October sixth, meeting our next meeting, and I think that would be something that would be valuable information to have, have him come and make a presentation on where, where he sees the numbers going, and as we wrap, as he gets closer to wrapping this up. So, unless there are any objections, I'll continue, you know, put him on for the next, and then you'll have, you know, if you've got time for, between now and the October sixth, for any questions or any concerns you may have before he makes that presentation. So, throwing it out there.
I think I asked this already, we have to do this now? Where's Anthony?
Yes, we are, yeah.
We can't postpone it anymore?
No, it's underway.
Is this process similar to what we did the last time, where we could send out cards and ask people to kind of tell on themselves and report back what they want?
It's not that, it's right, it's not the visual, it's more, it, what they used to call the statistical reval in terms of getting-
How many times can we get away with a card reval?
I don't, I think this is probably, I think every ten years you have, you have to get in there to do it.
Ten, twenty, twenty.
Yeah.
Because you do know this is dangerous doing this, because property values are still dropping, and that, that makes our grant list go down.
Well, they'll just have to raise the mill rate, won't they?
No.
But if we can't postpone it, I guess we have to do it. What does this cost? A hundred thousand?
Um, yeah, about a hundred. I, I think it was less last time.
Who thought-
It was around a hundred thousand, I thought.
It was last night, it was about a hundred.
Right?
I don't know.
Who thought, you know, who thought this up? The Association of Revaluers?
The state.
I mean, it's a joke.
Someone in the state.
Value is the value.
It's the state.
You could just take what a home's selling for in town, and you'd know what their worth.
But, but it, yeah, it ends up being the same thing anyway, because if the values go down, the mill rate goes up. Because you still need the same amount of money to run the town. So, it's, you know, what ends up happening is, it gets shifted from business to residential or vice versa, you know?
There's where you should call your state rep and state senator and say, "This is a waste of money." Especially on the five-year plan. It had to be the, those groups that lobbied the, the state to implement it, so it was every five years. Fisher appraisal, you know?
Some, some lobby group.
What do they do with all the empty houses?
Try to find the owner.
You're gonna see more and more of those.
Item C, update on field use and turf proposal.
Right, this is an update for you based on the September ninth meeting that the Recreation Committee, Commission had put together a subcommittee, which I was invited to, along with many other folks around the table, to look at the proposal and discuss and get more information. And what you have here is a more detailed explanation of what that proposal would entail. So the group met on, on the ninth, I think it was very productive to have that conversation. It allowed us to go through several facets of that proposal to understand what we're talking about with respect to any public-private partnership that would allow us to leverage an opportunity to get more fields built, as we, you know, have been talking, not just buildings, but field use for some time, and about the demands that we have. So, the group, in essence, went through that and asked questions about how that would work with Lauren and Fran and myself and Rose present, along with Little League, to talk about scheduling, talk about, you know, the proposal, and essentially, creating enough fields or upgrading fields, not so much as creating fields, not building, but build out of the infield or converting them to turf fields. And under the proposal, allowing for an infusion of cash to match with the town to build those out in exchange for restricted or some use, not a full-blown unrestricted or ownership or anything like that, but a use of the fields for a six-week period within the summer. So, it's gonna take more evaluation. At this point, it's just discussion purposes, and the group felt that the next step would have to come back to, or go back to the Rec Commission to really go through this and make sure we understand all of the moving parts in the proposal and that. But essentially, it's a, a, a public-private partnership potentially, if we can work out all of the details, if it makes sense for us and the town, and quite frankly, whether the council is willing to invest any type of money in the development of the fields or the improvement of these fields. And you heard some of the proposal presentation at the last meeting, but this document gives you a little bit more detail as to what fields we're looking at in terms of Memorial, Tucket, High School, Wallfield, Coulter, and Northford Park. In essence, the proposal would have us go up to an RFP or proposal to have a contractor come in, and he's suggesting that they would have an infusion of cash to build these fields. And for that exchange, we'd have use of those fields.
How, how do we get from what we talked about when a proposal was made whereby a sports complex was talking about upgrading the fields in exchange for their use, to your numbers here where it's about a twenty-eighty split with a downpicking of eighty percent of the cost of upgrade?
Well, that, that's just, at this point, it, that's what he's talking about in terms of his investment, you know, whether or not we agreed to it or not, or say, "Listen, you're in for one fifty, we're in for one fifty," and we, we split. He's just looking at what he thinks it would cost to convert those fields.
Did I, did I miss something, though? I thought the proposal was that they would upgrade the fields in exchange for their use.
No, it wasn't that he was going to upgrade all of them and absorb all of the cost of it. There was always going to be some cost to the town. He did not specify that at his initial proposal. Then he put this proposal together as far as estimated cost for them, and in talking at that meeting, Little League had, and with Franny there, Northford Park and Coulter, they're not looking to do the work. So you already take that, those fields out of this, this cost on here. And then, the discussion also came up about wall field, if we do anything with wall field, of converting it or just leaving it. So if we did just the four top fields, the sixty-ninety diamonds, that basically comes out to a fifty-fifty split, because it would be about three hundred thousand dollars to renovate those fields. And his commitment was a hundred fifty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars a year for ten years is how he got the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the town would put up the other hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And also, there's in-kind services.
And wall field is the new field, right?
Wall field's the new field, and so what they're talking about doing is just renovating the infield on that. Because of the, the clay on that, the infield of that, there's been issues with that field as far as-
This is like a roof we put on for hundreds of thousands of dollars that leaks. Now we've got a field that we put out, and I don't know what, doesn't work.
Well, it works. The problem is, is because we don't have a full-time groundskeeper on that field. The clay is, the clay that was used on that field, the way it has been explained at Park and Rec Commission meetings, is that the, the clay is like what they use at Major League Baseball fields, that you have groundskeepers that are always turning it over and the watering and the whole issue. We don't have that here. So, there's issues with kids getting hurt, and if they converted it to turf, then they could use it for not only a forty-six, sixty-
We've never heard of full-time.
I forgot the dimensions. There's different dimensions of the Little League fields, they could get more use out of it. So that's all part of the discussion, there's been no decisions made on it. It's going to the Park and Rec Commission meeting, so this is still all just in the talk stage developmental.
This is at no cost to the town?
No, fifty-fifty split.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it depends on, it depends on what fields get done, if, if there is even an agreement.
Right.
If we, so these are-
Yeah, I'd like to be clear that, because, you know, around town, there's all kinds of rumors. There is no, there's no contract or agreement. This was, one businessman had an idea.
Right.
And that's as far as it's gone. And I gotta tell you, with, with us not having any money, I don't see, you know, we don't have to do anything and the kids play baseball.
Correct.
So, and we don't have to do anything next year and the kids play baseball. And it's the same for both teams, you know? If there's a mud puddle, there's a mud puddle. And the little kids of today should have come and watched the fields we played on in town here, and had to line them and bowl them all at the same time. But, I mean, we do not have three or four hundred thousand to upgrade fields.
Right.
And, and I don't know where we're gonna get that money from, to put it in next year's budget. I mean, we just don't. And, so, you know, if that, if, if that proposal is expecting us to spend this kind of money, and I gotta tell you, I know that people from Little League come here and tell us the fields are horrendous. You know, I've built all along the shoreline, and, and, and all the guys that are on my job sites are so envious of North Branford's fields. The guys, yeah, maybe I'm just, you know, the people are telling me, but I've had people from, got fathers from Clinton, fathers from Guilford, they're like, "You guys' fields are awesome." So, I'm like, "Well, you should come listen at a council meeting," and they tell us how bad they are. So, and I haven't had anybody in Little League in, you know, years and years, so I know nothing about our fields. But I do know this, we have a lot to spend money on, and I'm not sure that, that a baseball field's gonna make the cut. And I know I'm only one person up here.
There is two.
But that's where I am on this. I mean, the fields are beautiful, and, you know, somehow, I thought that it was at a no cost to the town, too, but, you know, I just don't, I don't see where we would get the money from. I don't know where we're gonna come up with three hundred thousand to do five baseball fields that the kids are playing on now. But where are we at with this?
It's just gonna go to the-
Go to Park and Rec for discussion?
Yeah.
Further discussion, back to Rec.
I mean, at the meeting, the Park and Rec Director, Lauren, was there, and also Brian Lynch- Lynch, as the Chair of Park and Rec, was at the meeting that we had on September ninth. So, you know, that's, it's just, it's going to them now for discussion purposes. And to see once, if they endorse the idea or whatever, and then it'll go back to the council with their recommendation.
Is where we're at. So, I mean, basically, what it sounds like to me is, where you're at is, you would be able to get turf for half price if you had the half-to-spirit to do it?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right. Just so everybody understands where it's at.
Yeah, I mean, it was a proposal by a local businessperson to give back to the town because he was putting money into it.
Which is a very nice gesture, because we would be very generous to get that, but if you can't afford the other half, then...
Right, and it's, it's still just in the talk stages. There's no contract, there's no, you know, Park and Rec. It has to go to them first because they're, they have field usage and policy and everything, and they would, they have to make their recommendation to the council.
Well, he's willing to spend $15,000 a year for the option of, for a six-week availability on fields that are cottoch.
Right, and it's, you know, it could be one field, it could be two fields. Well, I mean, it's not, it's not using all the fields. He's not in charge of the scheduling, he's, you know, none of that.
It's an offer to negotiate?
Right, and, and, you know, the high school teams, Little League teams, youth football, that they all have used Connecticut Sports Complex to use their fields during rainouts, if there are field conditions. He's been very generous in letting them use them without a cost to those organizations. And so he's just trying to give back to the town, and there's not, there's not a commitment that he is going to control all the fields. They're not his fields, they're still town property. So there's a lot of misconceptions out there, but like Al said, there is no contract. It's still in the talk stage, and nothing has been approved by the council.
My only question is, Fran, how much do we spend on the existing fields a year now? You know what I mean? Would, how much would this offset our normal expenditure over a 10-year period?
I'm working on those numbers now, trying to get them together.
That was a question that we asked that night, and Franny is...
That could be a possible advantage to the town.
Right, that would offset...
You have to look at those numbers, so...
Right.
There's definitely an advantage, isn't it, disadvantage? But the advantage that the fields that were turned would be a lot less.
Maintenance.
They have to do every day to, to clay type fields. And really, the advantage to, for like Little League, if you want to say, for the, let's say, Wall Field. Wall Field, there's, there's nothing wrong with Wall Field. The clay is hard, we're working on it, there's benties to put in it. There's not a blunder job at all. It's the best field that's built, that's built in North Branford, just so you know. But the advantage is that they can put, you don't have to worry about rainouts, and you can put big, different-sized fields. They can be softball, baseball. You know, this year, they had, Little League, they did 28 tourney games within, I know Joe was back there, he can probably back me up, but, I mean, it got overused because it's a good field to use. That wear and tear would be a lot less. Now, we're gonna resod edges, so you talk about cost, you talk about clay, you talk about sod, you know, recutting the edges, you know, make just general maintenance. It's a big number. And that's one field of, of what we have.
Right.
There is an advantage to it, but again, there's a cost to it, too.
John, I have one question I wanted you to clear up. It's been stated that I should leave the room during these conversations. I've abstained from it all. No vote was taken.
That's absolutely not what you should do. If there's a vote, that's something else. If there's a, if there's some sort of a disagreement that's going on, and you have to quiet the group, you know, you're acting ministerially. You are not doing anything discretionary. You're not taking, as far as I can see, you're not taking a position. You're running the meeting, and absolutely ridiculous for you to have to leave the room under any circumstances.
Thank you.
I just have one, you know, before we leave Tom Manager's report. I don't really have good news, but I had to tell the council that, talking with Fran, we're gonna have some issues that we're gonna have to address within his department that have come up recently in terms of tree matters, and I think he may have mentioned that before, but there are several trees that he has to deal with, and that's cost money that we don't have within the budget. And another item that he's got a problem with is a boiler that, that is, is crapped out.
Yeah, we had a boiler, we were doing service last week, and the boiler has a crack in it, so it needs to be replaced.
Worse than that?
It's probably worse. So I'm gonna process now of looking at prices, you know, and whether we should go to gas, just replace the boiler as it is. Actually, we cannot buy a new section for the boiler, because apparently they don't make them anymore for that, that boiler. So you have to replace the boiler there, or one of the thoughts is to go to propane gas, more efficient. Apparently, the boiler was put in a high, and Donny, I think knows more about that, is a high-temperature boiler that was, that they use for, those used for the floor heat, which is a low-temperature system.
Right.
So there's all these mechanisms to, to low-temperature.
Right.
But apparently, when the water comes back, because it's such a low temperature, the boiler's hot.
Condensed and rotted off the section.
It killed the section. So saying all that, that's, it's, I believe it's a 2,000 grid building, I can't remember exactly, so...
It's just running, just running floor heat?
Yeah.
You'd definitely wanna go to a condensing propane boiler.
And that's the problem. You know, it's more, it's quite a bit more money. And the pro, I just started getting prices on it, but, you know, we're talking about $15,000 to do that floor. And that, that's leaving, that's leaving room. That's, that's the total job, but that boiler's big enough to do the main garage, wondering if we ever do that floor over. And we have to put a tank in, you know, pipe for gas and make, because I have money in the budget this year for the office furnace that we're gonna change over, which probably don't do that now. So, you know, we're gonna leave stubs in the gas to be able to do the rest of the building again. So I still have some prices to get, but it's not good, and it has to be replaced because everything's gonna, it's the main, it's a job. How many BTU boiler are you looking at? Uh, no, I can't say that. Uh, no, I can't say that.
Better be careful. Don't explode.
Stop this down here. I did get, I did get prices both ways, so I'm told that the propane burns, it's a lot more efficient, and it burns, as far as BTUs and gallons, I don't know how they do it, but it's a lot more, a lot more efficient.
It's what they're doing in all the new buildings. If you don't, if there's no natural gas available, that's what they're doing. Big demand.
If we do replace it, but if we had the same type of boiler, though, if the one goes to the propane gas.
What's there, oil?
With a oil burner, can you put all your used motor oil in that? Well, I have two, I have two prices now that I use separately, different type of furnace. I don't think they make a, what you say oil furnace, but I would make enough oil. Right now, we just about got a key that we use. We've gotta use it as a supplement type key, because you still have to have kind of a main source. But we have, you know, that's quite a bit. We have it in the new garage, the high-efficiency propane, but that's on the other side of the yard.
Definitely the way to go.
Thank you, Fran.
Yep.
Community events and presentations.
I just wanted to say something about the trees that I know you could have just brought up. We're getting slammed with trees this year. It is, it's out of control. We probably get two to three trees, new calls every day, a lot of dead. With these little storms, the rainstorms that we're getting, we're getting calls, calling every night during rain because trees are falling. Currently, you know, I had to go to contractors to do some of the work. We're just, I'm building up debt now because of trees, but we are way behind. And fall is coming, I'm hoping to get our crews out doing stuff, but we still were paving this week, so we still have quite a bit of work left. And then we, well, we had that microburst in Norfolk, part of that's on last year's budget and some of it's on this year's budget. So it's an FYI, we are a currency loss, and there's not too much that I can do about it. A lot of these are...
Fran, when UI comes out, when they're in the wires, do they charge us or not?
UI charges? No.
No.
No, but we pick up, we have to pick the stuff up.
Right.
That's a good thing when they come out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And UI has done our town with their, all they did was the three-phase line going through town on their end of it, which was very successful, but we have other issues now. A lot of ash trees.
Right. All right, community events and presentations.
Ms. Mayor, I'd just like to inform you, and it may be old news, but on a very positive note, on Sunday, October 4th, at the Tucker Valley Park, there is a benefit softball game between members of the North Branford Police Department and the North Branford Fire Department between the hours of 10:00 and 5:00. And we would invite you to stop by and provide us with your support. I can tell you this, that working with the police officers on the street, between cops and firemen, it's really heating up a nice battle on a very good note. And I think it'll be a good time for ourselves and all our families. Again, it's a benefit, and the benefit is to fill a patrol car and one of our ambulances with food for the food pantry of North Branford. And I gotta thank North Branford Police Department and its officers for moving this forward. Some of them sit on the Board of Directors for the, for the food pantry. So we're hoping for good weather, and it should be a great day.
Thank you, Chief.
Good luck.
Dudley Harrison, you know me.
Yes.
You know what I'm gonna talk about?
Yes.
The Wall Field issue. Sounds like you got a tiger by the tail at what I'm hearing tonight. I have one question about Wall Field. Can the council sell it, or does it have to go to a vote of the citizens?
Referendum, like?
The referendum vote in order to sell that piece of property. Does it go to the people, or is it just you nine guys?
The town can, the town can make a decision on whether to sell or buy land. They may, they may choose to have a public hearing to get public input. The townsfolk can petition. If they don't like the, the decision of the town to sell land, they can file a petition for an initiative, and that could lead, depending on the, depending on how many people sign it, and if it's an order, that could lead to some sort of a vote. But, you know, the easiest thing to do is to have folks like yourself who have, who have a particular view on the subject to express yourself. This is about as intravenous as you can get coming right here, talking to the council in person, instead of checking a box on a piece of paper after the fact. So, you know, I think this council, and certainly some council persons have been very vocal on wanting to hear, to include the townsfolk more than has perhaps been done in the past. So I think the answer to your question is you should be able to get the same effect as if you did have some kind of say in the matter.
Okay. But we did have two public hearings a year ago, I forgot what you call them, where this was discussed, and we looked at the plan done by Yale and so forth. And there's a lot of citizens opposed to the idea, period. And you people keep coming up with this if you want to sell it. And it's the last piece of really usable land that could be used as a park. You could make, you can get a soccer field on that place, probably even a softball field on it. It could be used for parks, what you call it. And you're biting your fingernails now about putting turf because you're short of ball fields, and then you're gonna sell the only piece of open space you got on this end of town. And it's the last piece of property really fit for a park right now, in my opinion. And it shouldn't be sold. That's where I'm coming from. And I want you to think twice about it, because it sounds like these developers, they're gonna do what they're gonna wanna do, and you got, you got a tiger-by-the-tail deal with developers. Because I've worked with developers, and I've done development work, and so I know how the game goes, kinda. And leave it alone. Throw the guy out and leave it as open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Dudley.
May I raise this up because I'm a little bit taller than everybody else? Good evening, I'm Cara Papa. I'm here to speak on a few different things. And to start with, I just want to thank all of you. Sitting here has been wonderful, because, you know, as we sit and complain, we don't necessarily know exactly what you do, and so you do give a lot of time, and I do hear your passion, even though I don't agree with all of you. And so I just wanted you to know that, that this is respectful. I'm not here to scream at you. The ethics thing was brought up, and I do have to say, I have it right here. If you'd like to, if you'd like me to read it to you, where it says, and I guess I have to ask the question, is this considered an executive session?
No.
Okay, because during executive sessions, he should not be in the room, according to the North Branford Code of Ethics, is where I read from. So I interpreted that wrong. So that was my fault.
Who?
The mayor should be in the room during that discussion, if it was an executive session, according to the North Branford Code of Ethics that's published here. If you'd like to read it, I'll bring it over to you. Okay.
If we're discussing...
If you're discussing the...
A subject matter that...
Subject matter, that immediate family and business purposes, which would, in my, the way I'm reading into it, would have to do with the ball fields deal. So that's my first order of business. I started a change.org petition. I've been talking to several people in the, in different positions, and that's what I was told to do, that would be a good idea. And I have not made 100 yet. I've, you know, there's only so much time. I have four jobs, so I have to, you know, delineate my time. However, Mr. Paulus responded, and I believe that his response was completely disrespectful to the people of this town. Because if anything, he works for the people of this town, and you represent us. You represent a couple thousand people each of you, or more. There's 32, 35,000 people in this town. And so therefore, you're...
Your population, you're only a double of what our population is.
15, 15,5, I apologize. I'm thinking 3.2 million in the state. That's my fault. So you're representing a couple thousand people each. You're not representing yourselves. And I do sit here, and I do hear, and you've been here a long time, and you've been doing the business of the town, but I don't hear you speaking for us, because I speak to a lot of people all the time, and I don't hear anything that we talk about being said here. I do agree with Mr. Fawnin, a green space has a lot of value. And I agree with this gentleman who spoke tonight. Paying for sewers, you don't want your town to smell. That's more important than paying for anything else. Clean water and clean sewers, that's very important. And as a citizen of the town, if I did have a sewer, I would be more than happy to pay that bill, because that's important. These things are important. Things that are not important are putting turf on our perfectly fine clay baseball fields. Okay? I took my son to soccer, to the Northford Field, and I found a dirty condom sitting out there that I had to walk by. And at the time, I did not have my trash picker with me. So I did call the Public Works, and I asked them to go pick it up. So there isn't a large budget for picking up, but there are people in this town that go around and pick up the garbage that's left behind, and a lot of it is left behind for another reason I brought up, because the people that we... And a lot of it is left behind for another reason I brought up, because the people that we pay contracts to, John's Refuge drops garbage around this town all of the time. And we increased, if you look at his budget, we increased the amount we pay him every year over the course of three years. He is not keeping up the end of that bargain. And what about Daco? My son, on his first day of kindergarten, almost got left behind. How much do we pay him in this?
You're in the wrong venue for that. That's a board venue.
Okay, but you are the town council, so you talk to the Board of Ed and you may not have control over their budget, but it should be brought to them. What do we do? Do we, are we okay with mediocrity? Because the people, the citizens of this town are not okay. And you know what? We're also willing to volunteer. You need somebody to take care of the fields? We're willing to go out there. I run occasionally at the high school and the garbage that's out there is disgusting. What, who's doing it? The town got together and went and picked it up. We're willing to do these things to save the town money because that's all I seem to be hearing up there. We're willing to take the responsibility to keep up the town green because that's what we want. We're willing to do those things, if you would just ask us, if you would just pay attention to us. This isn't 25 years ago and that leads me to time. I hear long range. I'm leading to hear what I'm leaving for my grandchildren 50 years from now. I hear 10 years, 15 years. What is the length of time that somebody cares about Little League? Maybe six, seven years until their kid gets into high school and they don't play it anymore? That isn't long range. We live maybe 100 years, but there are generations that lives past us. That's long range. So these are things that I would like the people that I vote for to care about. Not who's making a buck tomorrow, not who's not making a buck tomorrow, and not having somebody who's employed by the town, even his opening statement, "Oh, enjoy the time that you live with us." I mean, that's not okay. What does that even mean? I read that yesterday and I was like, "What are you saying? What? I don't understand."
What was that?
And his opening statement on our website, he has a line that says, "During your..." Not citizenship, but during your time that you live with us or whatever.
I'm sorry, what website is that? Whose website?
Townofnorthbranfordct.com. I mean, I don't understand. I don't understand. So please, use our money to pay for the sewers, keep our town clean, keep our people without cholera. That's very important. Please, do not negotiate with private corporations regardless if they seem like they want to give you something. Because if they were just giving you something, they would just give it. And please, talk to the North Branford Land Trust. Maybe there's a way that you could find a grant that we can have open space as a town green and maybe make some money from it. Please, don't get caught in this, I don't know what title you wanna put on it, but please, listen to the town. It's a very modern era out there. You can put together a forum, you can use Survey Monkey, and you could ask the town. While you're sitting right there, every meeting, "Hey, guys, I know you're out there in cyber states. What do you think about this?" Engage us because we want to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, you know, in response, I was asked, I was given a link and asked on this online petition to respond. So I did, and I'm sorry she feels that my response was disrespectful in any way. It was just a matter-of-fact response, that it is, as Counsel Rose said, a proposal. It's not a contract and that we're doing our due diligence to evaluate that proposal. And my, it's out there. I can certainly print that off and send it to you, but, and you can read it for yourselves. And it also included the link in terms of the health concerns that we've done some research on and State Department of Health links. So just to set the record straight, I was asked to respond.
I was also about the town's website regarding Mike's opening statements. I'd like to welcome you to the town of North Branford's website. We hope you will find the site easy to navigate and will allow you to find information you need to conduct your visit with the town.
No, that's another note.
Don't please, man, don't. You're out of order. You already spoke. Don't yell from the audience. Anthony, go ahead.
Doug.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Joe Mascari, North Branford Little League. First off, thanks as a fellow volunteer. Thanks for spending all this time up here. Just to clarify a couple of things. Al, you mentioned the fields are beautiful. We have one field that you cannot find, a nicer field, okay? The turf, the problem with the turf is just overuse. I mean, Freddy's guys are out there all the time doing the best they can. We played 89 games in 56 days on that field. It's a lot. And that's why it's, there's some wear and tear. We're doing that because we are short fields. The Sports Flex has been nothing but generous to North Branford Little League, donating, they're a sponsor of ours. They donate facility time. If we have a rainout and their fields are playable, they let us go up there and play. I think it's, for us, this influx of money he's looking to give, if it's gonna help with the other fields, so maybe we don't have to play 89 games in 56 days on one field, it's only gonna help North Branford Little League. As far as, you know, the other fields, it's not just one field. We have 400 kids playing baseball and softball in town. We have one field that is, like I said, it's head and shoulders better than any field around. That's, when you hear people say that, that they're talking about wall field. They're not talking about Colter. We don't bring in the Colter. We only, we have towns come, that's where we play. Like I said, I don't know if anybody else has any questions for me, but that's, that is basically our stance. We are short fields. With rain on Colter, if it was upgraded and now we could use it, it's gonna help. Because we're, we're out of field space. We just, we're, you know, I don't know how you guys used to do it back in the day with 12, 12 teams in one division. We have six teams across the board and we're struggling. We're struggling to get a full season in. And I appreciate your time and, like I said, I'm easy to reach if any of you guys have any questions for me or I could be of any assistance. I'm available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? All right, resignations and appointments. I am adding appointment to members to the Communications Committee. I have been working on this committee. I have not found a citizen at large yet. I've asked two people so far and they declined. Obviously, the Fire Chief and Police Chief are gonna be on this committee and two members from the Police and Fire Commission and two members from the council. So...
That's you and who else? How many volunteers do we have on that side?
I know. But, yes, I don't know, depending if you were interested in going on the Communications Committee. Just let me know.
You're talking about meeting how often? You're talking about meeting quarterly, weren't you?
Or as... Yeah, I mean, there hasn't been really an agenda set up yet. I envision this probably... I was on one before. It met probably every six weeks or so.
Well, I'll be...
I mean, it wasn't a very large, heavy, you know, load. Very informative and I think an important committee. So...
Hold on.
You want to... And I reached out to the two chairmen, Sevettal and Triano, to see if they would serve and there's... Joe Sevettal, the Fire Department.
Oh, oh, oh.
And, let's see, Ed Purnear.
Did he say no?
No, I haven't talked to him yet. And that's it. So I should have that committee together within next week or so.
I'll volunteer for that.
Danny lost your chance.
Guess so. Speak up, don't I?
All right. Under unfinished business, discussion and action, update to the fire benefit documents, police union, bill tabled. Resolution to adopt proposed ordinance 2015-2, amending chapter 193, solid waste table from August 11th.
They're still working on it.
Okay. Review of draft letter regarding memorials on town property, waiting for town attorney and that one.
No, you have it. I sent it to you last Friday.
It says waiting for J.J.
Yeah, my apologies. My note on my...
Yeah, I was gonna say, thought I saw something on that.
I didn't remove that.
You're waiting for me for what? For a memorial or something?
For the letter.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Shouldn't it say friends, families, and residents? Why don't we just say representatives?
Well, it says, "Dear friends, families, and representatives of town of North Branford." You know, the hardest part of this is exactly figuring out how you wanna use this. But representatives mean boards and commissions. It means that this letter would go to appropriate boards and commissions perhaps, such as Planning and Zoning, certainly the Police Commission, or anyone else you choose to do, to send it to. And it's also suggests that it might not be sent, that it might be posted, such as in the town hall or in the sound, I think would be appropriate to put something like this in the Sound Newspaper or the Totucket Times. And, you know, it's just, it's, you know, you're not gonna send this out to every family.
Okay. I'll get on now, but I have another one.
Okay, sure.
Or you say, "In this regard, blah, blah, blah." Shouldn't the location...
Wait a minute, the blah, blah, blah.
Shouldn't that, that the location and the memorial report with the theme, shouldn't that be the first item under required, the requirement?
Those aren't in numerical order.
No, but to me, it just seems, it just seems more logical that way.
Oh, well, that's fine. I mean, you know, what I, what I had in mind there was, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be putting a...
See, I proved you that I read it and I just...
No, I appreciate that.
It seems more logical that that first.
Somebody may object to, you know, say, a Holocaust memorial at a playground or at the dog pound.
Right, that's why I think location should be first.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I think that what I envisioned is if somebody did come before the council, all of these things would be considered. I don't, I mean, there's so many other locations that I don't think that's a deal breaker, you know? But I'm happy that you read. So, sure. Why does it say, doesn't it say, did I read that wrong? It says it does not pertain to the naming of fields and stuff. Why does it say that? I thought this would be all town-owned property. Well, because the naming of fields and buildings and facilities, that's really covered by something else. That's covered either by state statute. There was a town attorney opinion on the naming of a school. You know, those are, those are matters that are treated simply elsewhere. These are the situations where someone wants to put a memorial. I mean, actually, place a name or having a name of a building changed or a name of a school is not really a memorial in the sense of what we're talking about. And the, you know, the town council has other, we have other rules and ordinances and even state statutes that govern that. I mean, street name, you wanna get to street names, that's not really what we're talking about here. At least that's not what I understood you to be concerned about this. You were concerned about the, I believe, the proliferation. I wanted to just make it clear to everybody that, you know, you just can't go and name these things. And fields are included. Well, I don't think anybody can name anything without going through here. I thought you were more concerned about people putting objects on... Well, who's gonna listen to somebody who decides to pronounce this building, you know, the Al Rose Building?
I think that's a good idea.
I don't think there's a whole bunch of people that are gonna sign up for this.
Not the statue.
The... I agree. What I made was an observation that in the last 10, 15 years, we've had a lot of things named that did not come before the council. And, and, so what I wanted to do was have you draft this, and I want it to go everywhere. I don't want it to just go to Planning and Zoning. I want it to go to the Board of Ed. I want it to go to the school principals. I want it to go to Little League. I want it to go to youth basketball. I want it to go to youth football. So that everybody's clear that, you know, the council has to be the bad people in town that say, you know, we can't do it. Because otherwise, you've got these names that are put on these fields and these locations and monuments and things that are subject to being placed there, you know, I don't wanna use the word unlawfully, but they're subject to be removed because they were never named properly. Well, memorials, you cannot put a private object on public land any more than you can put a private object on someone else's private land. That's the reason why people have to come before us as the governing body of the town in order for us to decide whether we wanna give you permission to erect a bench or a statue or some other... ...fill on our property. I'm not arguing that point. I agree with you there. What I'm saying is it's been being done around town. And we need to not go out there and tear them all down. We need to get the message. And again, I think it's very important that it goes to the Board of Ed, the principals, and everybody in between. So they all know you cannot name something, give someone permission to put a memorial up without them coming before the town council. And I've said this before. I said it last week and I'll say it again because it's like, wow, Al's a hard ass. And you know what? And I'm gonna just say it one more time. The volunteer or the child or the teacher or the coach who died today is no more important than the one that died yesterday or the one that's gonna die tomorrow. And as a town, and as a town council, we have to throw emotion out. And we have to look at these things and say, you know, do, you know, do we wanna do this? Whereas a group close to that coach or that teacher or that superintendent of schools, which I lived through, that one, you gotta throw, you gotta get the emotions out of it because a town is here for 100 years from now. We don't have enough fields to name them for every child that died untimely or every coach that... Or for a volunteer. You know, volunteers are, again, then somebody tonight said, "Oh, Little League, you know, you're involved in it in six, seven years and you're gone." And not everybody, but for the most part, that's true. And we don't have enough property to name them after the person that was a very good volunteer for a six or seven-year period when, you know, my family's been here 360-some years. So, you know, the town is, the town is the town. And what I've seen and what some of the 2,000 people that I represent have brought to my attention is that this has not been followed in the last, I don't know how many years. And so we need to, I think that we need to get this letter out to everybody. But we need to name any and all town property, whether it's covered or not somewhere else.
Al, I think you touched on something that's very important and the thing you said that's important is emotion. All of us sitting up here have emotion about a lot of different issues that come across, you know, the council. But I think that it's important in this town for everybody, whether it be Board of Ed, public, you know, parks and rec. We have rules and laws. The rules and laws need to be followed, not based on what your emotion is. And these are the things that end up getting the town into litigation all the time. When people do things on emotion and don't follow the rules and the regulations. So, I mean, you make a very good point. And I think I agree with you. And it's not, you know, being, that you don't feel bad, that you would like to have a monument for every single... single person, I mean, realistically, but things, you can't govern on emotion, and I think you make a good point.
Well, I mean, it's my understanding, it's been in this matter forever. I mean, I mean, the town is-
Well, you know, we really have to distinguish between memorials, you know, placing, wanting to have objects on town property as a memorial of some kind, and the naming of schools, or buildings, or streets, or roads. I think streets and roads are probably, I, you know, I think that's, that's covered by the developer as part of Planning and Zoning. Certainly, the, back in 1987, one of the earlier opinions that I wrote, and which Al has been referring to, was a matter where the Board of Ed unilaterally decided to name a school after a beloved superintendent who had suddenly passed away, and that, it caused to question as to whether the Board of Ed has that authority. And based on state statute, and my opinion at the time which I still hold, is that the town council is the governing body of the town, and the buildings are the, you know, that's on town property. And, you know, the buildings, we have responsibility for in terms of the maintenance and things like that, and so that's town, that's the town, that's the town's decision. The one thing that I'm missing out, and I'm, because I don't disagree with anything you're saying, is that with the exception of that matter involving the naming of the school, in the thirty years that I've been here, I don't remember any other matter involving the naming of a, now, the naming of a building, or a town building.
They've never come here.
Okay, but where, where does it, so where's the building, you mean, somebody just unilaterally inscribes a name somewhere?
Well, he was talking about Calafati Field. It was one of the examples-
I didn't wanna bring up, I was trying to do this-
Okay, well, that helps me. If you're talking about sports fields particularly?
The sports fields.
The high school football field was an example that he has brought up, because it just, all of a sudden, I don't know how many years ago, then it even appeared up.
Well, you know, if you don't mind, what I could, you know, I could sort of articulate that aspect. I kinda dismissed the naming of buildings, and roads, and parks, and things, as something different than what the subject matter here was, which, and also did-
I wanna include all that in the subject matter.
Right, so why don't I just, why don't I just-
You could even lose some of league leagues, and just include everything. Whatever the town owns, you gotta, you gotta come here, if your group wants to name something, or put a memorial up, or do something, you gotta come here. And I mean, and I do remember, the, the young lady that came before the town council, I was on it, and the young girl came, and, and I don't even know whether it was a relative, or a boyfriend, or what, that had died unexpectedly.
There was a friend, a friend of hers.
And, and she wanted to, you know, put a memorial with all the, like, the youth in town that had died, untimely deaths. And the town council said, "Well, we don't have any money for that," and we said, "If you can raise the money." And lo and behold, about two and a half, three years later, she came back with the money, and, and that's the, the one monument or memorial that was approved by the town council.
Well, that, and that suggests that, you know, but if you're, but if you're talking about particularly Board of Ed-
I think it's the one.
Fields, or athletic facilities, or any, any other border-town commissions-
Do you know this office?
I don't know. Those all belong to the town, and, and even if it, even if it didn't, the town council could pass an ordinance in order to create a process, that, as we say at the outset here, that is sensitive, and fair, and equitable, and, and that's why we list some of the things that we will consider, to make sure that people understand that, you know, we want to make an, you know, make a fair decision, so that we don't have every, you know, you know, I'd say it this way, we have cemeteries, and we have places that are particularly designed, or supposed to be for that. But I also said here that the town is committed to commemorating and honoring persons and organizations, and to call to remembrance events, and thought I left it up, if you read the language, it's totally up to the discretion of the town council. But I, I do have to say that I did not really flesh out the situation of naming athletic facilities, or any other facility.
So maybe you could just put there, include those.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think the part where I say, "I'm not talking about that," I probably should say, should say something about that.
Right.
Because most of this-
Because I read it, I'm like, why are you excluding this?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I can say something about that. I was, I was actually focusing on, on material-
So we'll look at it next time.
Right. Okay.
Pump X out.
Why are you studying it? Maybe you ought to study the one that the state allows.
The what?
The state allows, because there's, there's a, one on, on thirty-nine, or going for whatever green was, it's, it's somebody's highway, and the state, the state approved it.
Yeah.
I know who it is, but I just don't wanna mention the name. It's a sign that says, "For a memorial for..."
Right.
So I don't know if that's-
Right, I mean, actually, you're right, and Al is right.
I think that's the state land, though, honestly.
Yeah, I know that that's right.
But she's, but Joanne is asking me to use that as an analogy, or as an example of how we would apply to locally here, which is, which is a good idea, and so that, you know, I missed that. I didn't think of naming streets or ballfields as memorials, but they are memorials, even though they're not, you know, defined objects. You're okay with the stuff on the sides of the road that was discussed?
Well, I read that, I'm not so sure that-
Those are really, for the most part, they're impermanent.
Yeah, they're kind of a problem.
And I don't, and, and, you know, it's on town land, but really, you know, the real, the only real objection, I think, would be if there was a safety issue involved.
Well, if it was a state road, is that, that's not town land.
Well, if it's a state highway, you're right, it's not town land.
I know he had to get it from the state.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not looking to call out, you know, if somebody wants to put some ribbons or flowers or something on the road where some tragedy happened, but, you know, that's not, that's not what I'm looking to-
It's not permanent either, really.
Yeah, and we're not, and we don't say that here, what, what, you know, unless it becomes a safety issue where people are stopping, and grieving, and praying, and endangering themselves and others, and we don't have that situation, frankly.
Well, that, that whole paragraph, because it's a lengthy one, might be able to be condensed on the roadside, because there's a lot of, I think, sentences in there that could probably go away in describing all of that, and condense that, just a little bit for us.
Okay.
A little wordsmithing.
Unless you feel that people would read it more, and understand what it says.
Well, he defers, and he says that it, it goes to the town's traffic authority if it becomes too much of a nuisance.
Well, safety.
Right, it's a safety issue of it.
Basically, we're exempt, basically, we're exempting that from any town council oversight. But I can pare it down, for sure.
All right. New business, discussion and action. Item A, report from town planning goals subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, in order for our committee to continue the planning, if the town council goes along with this on continuing our planning phase, I'd like to make a motion to use some of the funding from the capital improvement fund that's already there. There's one hundred twenty thousand four eighty-one currently designated for bathrooms for the Board of Education for the high school, to use that money instead to develop educational specifications, or renovate his new high school, and two, to use a portion of the hundred thousand dollars that's currently in the capital improvement fund that was slated for facility study, to help, to hire a design engineer, to prepare a design for a new police station that potentially would be within a municipal center.
I'll second it for discussion. If that's a motion, I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you.
Voted by Councilor Diamond, seceded by Councilor Fucy for discussion.
Discussion?
We gotta vote on the motion.
We gotta vote on the motion.
Roll call.
Well, we can vote until you have the discussion.
She made a motion, you gotta vote.
Made a motion, you gotta move on, yeah. Do you have a motion, or?
Yeah, I must have just read it, and then you seconded it.
I seconded the motion for discussion.
You discussed it for discussion purposes.
Yes, discuss it.
Now we can discuss, before we vote.
Exactly, we've all discussed.
Right. Yeah, we don't vote before we discuss it.
Again, I'm making, I'm trying to make the case that we have some money in there, if we can, if we can do a renovate his new high school, and we can get some reimbursement, we can save the town money, take that, there's money already in there, it's a hundred, over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the bathroom renovation, use that to get ed specs. It doesn't mean we automatically don't approve them, but at least we, we have to have ed specs if we're gonna even consider renovating this new high school.
I disagree, and I'm gonna tell you why. I think that we're putting the cart before the horse, and I don't disagree that there's all of the problems that you say there are, but I, I know that there was discussion that, and I don't know where we stand with any of this referendum for building, you know, to build or renovate as new, but we're talking about in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, the debt falling off, and that's when we wanna just automatically dive right into more projects. And myself, as a taxpayer first, and not a counselor, would like to, I don't see what the harm is if that project got pushed off a year, or two years, or, you know, if we're in dire needs, but by going forward with specifications, I've been here long enough, that, that is basically greenlighting the project to, to go forward. Without any other discussion, it's gonna be assumed that we're just, that we just made the decision that we're gonna renovate the high school as new, and I think that we need a lot more input than just making a motion, and voting on it, and drawing up specifications. I think it's sending the wrong idea. It's just my opinion, but I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in, but that, that's why I disagree. And I don't disagree that we need it, I just disagree that the, the, the way we're going is just too fast and furious for me.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll be voting against it.
I'm not surprised.
And, I mean, you came up with a hundred million dollars in cost tonight, and then, and then, you know, an hour and a half later, you want us to vote to go forward with it. So, I commend you for all the work you did on it, but, you know, we, you know, and here's the thing, that falling off bit on the, on the debt, you know, you gotta remember, we're one of the most in-debt-per-capita towns in the state of Connecticut. So let's not give the taxpayer a one year of relief. Let's say the minute it drops below, and the only, and the only thing I want you to be aware of, don't put up there, oh, you know, our debt is only five million dollars, it's gonna drop to three. That's the freaking interest on the money, okay? That's, we're paying the interest on the money, and maybe, you know, paying it down, but, you know, who knows? And, and you know what, Anthony, how far in debt are we? What do we owe right now?
Off the top of my head?
Off the top of your head? A hundred million, seventy million? So, I mean, having said that, that, what type of counselors would we be to see a dog and pony show two hours ago, and then vote to go forward with it two hours later?
I'd like to see it go to refer, I would like to see that go to referendum, you know.
Well, the, the issue with referendum, as Lisa explained to us at the last council meeting, is if we went to referendum, we would have to have a cost associated with it, so you would, the question would be, do you wanna spend X number of dollars to renovate as new a new high school? And how can you get that number to give to the people to, to, to vote on that referendum without taking the next step and getting ed specs and doing renovations? It's not saying we're doing the project, it's not saying that it's not to go to referendum.
Oh, yes it is. You weren't there when we built the middle school, that's exactly how it happened, and it got, and it happened, and right under everybody's noses as they built that.
Okay, first, first of all, the numbers we had up there, I didn't make those numbers up, I got those from Mark, Mark Jackson. You know, I didn't, you said to put the number up there.
I'm not criticizing you at all, and I think you might be a hundred percent right, but I just don't know automatic, automatic approval tonight.
You're, you're gonna vote your way, and I'm gonna vote my way.
We're not trying to say we're rushing it, we're saying-
You're absolutely rushing it.
You're gonna draw specifications and plans, that's a green light to go.
You need to design a renovated high school, you know, you're making the decision tonight that you're gonna do that, and we don't know that that's the decision we need to make. You heard the superintendent earlier, there's only a hundred and eight kids in kindergarten. Okay, so here's what that is, that's twelve hundred and ninety-six kids in the total school system within twelve years.
It just needs a lot more thought and discussion.
We really think about this stuff, not just have a, you know, another dog and pony show.
I resent that, it's not a dog and pony show, we put a lot of time and effort into that, we're doing a dog and pony show.
I'm not saying that.
Okay, well, I-
But I'm not saying that, I don't wanna insult you, because I think you're probably right, and you did a good job, but I think it would be, we would not be doing our due diligence by voting yes to proceed with specifications and plans tonight.
What is the proper due diligence that I'm interested in seeing?
For nine of us to decide to spend a hundred million dollars, you think, on, on some information that we got tonight?
We're not talking about-
This information up there. Okay, and you said you talked to the state, the state, well, what would I expect from people whose pamphlet has misspellings and not the proper, you know, I mean, but at any rate, you put up there that we can't get reimbursed for doing the bathrooms, and that's wrong, and the state rep told us that that was wrong, that if you're gonna remodel the bathrooms, and it's five hundred thousand, it certainly, if the paperwork is done right, can be reimbursed. Now, I got that right from him, so if he told you something different, well, I'll ask him to be in the room at the next meeting, and we'll get the answer. But you put up there that we can't get reimbursement, and, you know, and I do have some people in the education field, and you're wrong with that statement, okay? You can do it properly, and you could go in, and you could remodel the bathrooms, and in another year, you could go in, and you could remodel the lockers, and you could paint one win, you could put new glass in, and if you do your paperwork right, it's all done. You know, all you wanna do is spend a hundred thousand dollars giving some engineer and some architect to design us something that-
We don't even know what the engineer would call us, though.
I'm just telling you why I'm voting against it.
We weren't saying you spent all this money, we were just saying we-
You most certainly were. You wanted to do it, and vote on it right now.
I don't know how you, you can read my mind.
Pretty easy to read.
Thank you very much.
Well, it isn't that, but what I, it's what I read here. It says to consider and act upon a proposed resolution to appropriating five point two million dollars for very-
No, that's- That's for something else.
All right, well-
That's for this.
That's for the boroughs.
All right, I'm reading on the wrong line.
Anthony, off the top of your head, how much money?
Seven million six three six five four two.
Oh, hang on, how much?
Say, say again.
Seven million six thirty-six five forty-two.
How much money did they want, with their appropriation that she wants to do tonight, how much money are we appropriating to spend on this? If this motion passes, how much money are we spending?
No idea.
There you go, let's go down that.
I said, I said, I said it would be a hundred and twenty, it would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is what I said. From the capital improvement plan, yes.
But the point, overall scope of the project.
No, no, so you want us to vote to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
I said, I didn't say, I said, take, that's where the funds are, I said, take from those funds that were for the bathroom. I didn't say spend a hundred and twenty thousand.
You know, I'm gonna call a question.
You're not gonna convince me.
I'm gonna call a question.
Where's the question?
I think we've had a discussion.
What is it?
Not on the agenda.
Call the vote.
So do you think you ought to have it on the agenda?
Do you wanna just reiterate what we're voting on, then, I mean, so we know?
Oh, I missed, sorry.
I was making a motion to use funds from the capital improvement plan, not all of the funds, but there are, there's a hundred twenty thousand plus currently designated for the bathroom renovations for the high school, to use those funds to develop educational specifications for the high school, and to use a portion of the money that's in there, the hundred thousand dollars in there for a facility study, to look at, to hire somebody to design something in terms of the police station. That's what I, what I said. I didn't say we're spending all the money, that's where the funds are.
Okay, roll call.
Didn't get a second.
It was seconded, I seconded for discussion.
I think that this has a lot of merit, I think they worked very hard on it. I think right now, I think it should go back on an agenda. We're two months away from an election, and for this council to approve this, and then you have four other people come up here on a new council, I think it's just- you have four other people come up here on a new council, I think it's just too much, too fast. But I think it should move forward, without a doubt. So, I mean, I support looking forward for the town, but at this time, I have to vote no, sorry.
Any more discussion, or you want the roll call vote?
There was a roll call, I saw.
Does the mayor want one?
No.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arndt?
Before I vote, I just wanna say that I, I'm insulted when I spend a lot of time, Al's getting a kick out of this, I get it, but it's just like with the economic, with the center plan business, it's not a joke, it's not a dog and pony show, it's of what we're doing to try and move the town forward in a responsible manner. And when it's called a waste of time by a fellow town council member, or when you attack somebody else for a proposal, not to spend money, just to move forward to find out what it's gonna take to move forward, it's insulting. It takes a lot of time. I'm, I'm, I'm voting yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fornin?
I too would like to make a brief statement. My only reluctance at this point in time is designating a specific sum of money to purchase something that's an unknown quantity. We don't know what a proposal would cost, I really think it's presumptuous on our part to earmark money that's been designated for one specific project, take it and make it available as a sum of money to be designated for something else. I think the appropriate approach would be to request some proposals from design professionals as to what it would cost, approximately at least, to put together a proposal for a police station or a high school, and then look at when and where we wanna designate those funds from, if we choose to do that. I don't feel it's responsible to take, earmark a hundred and twenty thousand dollars when we don't know what we're going to spend of that, or if we're gonna spend all of it. So unfortunately, I, with all due respect to the people who put in the time and effort, I think they did a commendable job, but I, I simply can't through good conscience designate a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to be available to fund a, a further study without knowing what that study is going to ultimately cost, so I vote no.
Councilor Fuji?
I'm gonna have to vote no too, but I, I'd also like to thank them for the time, and I think that it may end up being the way that we go, but I just, I, I don't have enough information to vote yes on that, and, and I'm not gonna, you know, I'm, my thoughts mirror what Counselor Fornin just said, so I'm gonna have to vote no as well.
Councilor Rose?
We're all giving speeches. I'm gonna vote no because I believe that the hundred and twenty thousand should be used to renovate the bathrooms like it was supposed to be. And I think that the board of ed should get on board and get going so we get some bathrooms remodeled. That was a no.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something. I, I wanted to say that committee worked very, very hard.
I agree.
The report is tremendous, I mean, it's something that I haven't seen in all the years I've served on the council. I've never seen anyone go ahead and do something like this, especially from the council and the members here. We always paid somebody to do these things, but it, it is a tremendous report, and I know, I know we'll go forward at some point, so it just has to wait a little bit. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, I agree, I thank the whole committee, I think they did a great job. And like I said, I don't think it's a dead issue, I think it's something else.
Well, it's not a dead issue, it'll come back.
Tell you what, though, it should be more than nine people deciding to build a renovated school as new, though, that I'm gonna say.
I know, and, and I agree with that.
Well, you don't agree with it, because you're just gonna blindly, just do it, just like the intermediate.
I am reasonable, Don.
I, I am being reasonable, I live in this town, I, we got thirty-one million, and I'm gonna tell you what, you're gonna price the people right out of, you're, the, the things you're talking about, you're gonna be looking at a forty million ring within two or three years.
Then, it's, it's too expensive to even have a discussion.
Well, I'm very passionate about it.
Spend a dime.
I don't know about you, but, you know, I don't have the money to buy it.
I firmly believe that the residents of this town have, definitely have to have a say as to whether, we renovate as new, we build a new high school, we do nothing, we didn't, I totally agree with that statement, and I firmly believe that, but in order to give them the information to say, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna renovate as new, you wanna build new, you wanna do nothing, we need to have some figures to give to them, to, to do that, because you can't just say, do you wanna do it and not, and have no idea what the cost is.
But if you're gonna renovate the building as new, just think about this, Al makes a lot of sense, maybe what, the way to go is, you renovate the bathrooms, then you renovate one ring, maybe you do, maybe it has to be done piecemeal for the town to afford it, we still get to the same end result. Maybe the police department needs more attention at this point than the school, I mean, we don't even know, I mean, this is the first time I'm seeing all of this.
Very good, so then I think what Joe is saying, what you guys are saying is perfectly valid, but I think from our perspective, we're just compiling information.
And we can't spend money like drunken sailors either, though, I'm sorry, I gotta say it, I'm very concerned about that. Where we are right now, every project we come into, we get less and less money from the state.
I, I'm...
You know, and, and also, you, you live in a town where people don't wanna bring in business for the most part, you, you're, you're hearing that, you're hearing that here, I'm hearing that.
This is all about compiling information, compiling our needs, and addressing what we have to address, so we can eventually go to the public with validated...
Start a website or a blog, and we're gonna talk.
And I'm just gonna say this one more time, you're saying you compiled information, but you didn't fact check. Somebody told that group that by doing the bathrooms, you couldn't get state money, that's wrong, I stand by that, you put it up there on a screen so everybody in town could see it, just to try and move along going your way and, and getting some kind of an angle to do that, and it was wrong, and I tell you what, I know you, I know you'll be going to the state to try and prove me wrong, and good luck to you, and I hope you do, but until then, that was a wrong statement. You can do it properly, and if this town will start doing their paperwork properly, you can do smaller, smaller projects than go out and spend fifty, sixty million dollars and get the state reimbursement.
I'd like to see the report sent to the libraries so the citizens can read it too, if that's possible. Send copies to the libraries.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, let's move on to the bond issue, to consider an act upon a proposed resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating Five Point Two Million for Various Capital Improvements and Authorizing the Issuance of Five Point Two Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation, Impending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose.
I see somebody to read that with the phrase in its entirety, and that'd be the motion that we need to pass. Again, the five million is the net amount, five point two allows for your issuance cost to be covered, so you're netting out with the five million dollars to the projects that were previously delineated, the four point three million is the road projects, three fifty towards the fire training facility, and three fifty towards Memorial Field.
I'd like to make a motion, let me see, what do I have to read here, the suggested motion.
First, on the first page, on the cover sheet.
On the cover sheet of the motion, okay. A resolution appropriating five point two million dollars for various capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of five point two million dollars in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
In its entirety.
Of, in its entirety.
Can you please reread that again?
Well, I, I just read it right off the page that Robinson and Cole, it's the wording that they gave us, and I guess that's the wording that it has to be in order to make the motion.
Proving the attached resolution that states that in its entirety is...
Because the entire resolution is three pages long. So the beginning is, we just gotta read the beginning, and then in its entirety is the, the three pages.
I'll see.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose, roll call.
Mayor Kandor?
Yes.
Does the mayor want one?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yeah.
Councilor Arndt?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fornin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Adam Sieb, if you have Connecticut Solar Challenge Program?
Right, yeah, you know, the mayor had asked for this in terms of wrapping up this program, so there's some information, what you've got to decide as this program wraps up, I also, you know, gave you some additional information in terms of the number of participants and kilowatt hours and so forth, but in a nutshell, the program is wrapped up and we get a two KW system that we get to install, the council has to decide what location, and if you wanna give me, you know, think about it, come back at the next meeting, nothing, there's no rush, there's no rush to do this, but potentially town hall, maybe public works.
Originally...
But what's the cost to install it and maintain it?
I, I don't know yet about, about maintaining it, but, but the agreement, as I understood it, was that they would install that free of charge, there wouldn't be any installation cost, but it would just be, if there are any ongoing maintenance costs for that system. And it, you know, it basically, we have to do an evaluation of the building, decide if, if this is the most appropriate building, maybe public works, but we have to, I have to go through an evaluation process once you decide where you think it might, might wanna locate it. So it's really nothing that you need to decide on tonight, it's just merely informational purposes in terms of giving you the, the stats and the fact that this is winding down.
So at one point, I think she was in here and she had said we had earned a five KW system, how did it turn out to a two KW system?
Uh, I don't remember that, I, I think it's...
I think it was based on how many people had signed up, right? Because it was a solar challenge, so depending, I think, how many people actually got solar.
What is a two, I mean, what would a two KW system do, I mean, a one light, I mean, I'm just, do you know?
Yeah, you can, you can look at this and, and look at some of these systems, like a six, you look on the page here that, in this document, some, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but six, six to...
Hundred kilowatts?
Six kilowatts, you know, gets you almost, you know, a small home, I think, or something like that, but I'll get, I'll get you answers for that. It's not gonna power, it's not gonna power the whole building, it's just gonna reduce...
So, I mean, how many roof panels is that, two, you know, not, yeah, I don't know, no.
I don't know how many panels that, that gets.
Does it go into the general...
Everybody says they gotta give a sentence on the cost.
Energy consumption of the building?
Exactly, we don't have to earmark it nightlight or something like that.
This roof is flat, right?
And, and it's expandable, so you can add, add panels to the system wherever you decide to put it, and it's just, it's just a reduction off of whatever bill you have, consumption that you have to do.
Two KW is tiny, though.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
You know, a normal home, you would need at least a, you know, a little ranch, you'd need a twelve KW, and, you know, most houses need twenty KW, and they can't run the whole house on it. So two KW, it's like, you know, maybe something like, would it be possible to get a solar panel or a system that would run like the sign at the, by the school, you know, something like that? That may or may not work, but, I mean, that's really only, I mean, putting that on a building would save the maintenance on it.
Unless, unless the town made an investment to expand upon that and add, add to that, but you're right, I think the sign, like, something I hadn't thought of, but something like that, or could be something down at the...
You could ask them if they, if their system would, they could adapt it to that, like, sign at the school.
Or another sign.
Or, yeah, something like that.
Well, they, I will say at the, at the building committee's meeting last night, there's a new sign up at the community center that Pete Deo did, and they were talking about having that sign lit, because it's not lit right now, it's just, it was a replacement of the sign that's up there, and they were talking about solar lighting for that sign. So if you're talking a sign, that might be an appropriate sign to, to look at, if that's all that needs to do.
All right. Item E, or D, I'm sorry, appropriation transfers.
I'm not transferred for fourteen, fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fornin, roll call.
Mayor Kandor?
Yes.
Does the mayor want one?
She stepped down.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arndt?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fornin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Arndt?
Yes.
Item E, financial report, August thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Financial report, basically, it's, it's very early in the year still, so none of it is at all remarkable, it's kinda insignificant at this point, to be honest with you. Numbers don't mean much, you know, until you get three or four months in. The revenue appears to be a little bit down, but there are some additional deposits that were not included due to the timing of the meeting, so I'm pretty sure we're pretty on par with last year for the revenue. The expense side of the house, again, appears to be up a little bit, if you look in the back page, it's mainly encumbrances that are higher than this point last year. Out-the-door money is about the same, so there really is nothing to report.
Thanks for Anthony. Item F, approval tax refunds.
Move, true, true.
Set.
All right, moved by Councilor Fornin, seconded by Councilor Arndt, roll call.
Mayor Kandor?
Yes.
Does the mayor want one? Councilor Angeloni?
Yeah.
Councilor Arndt?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item fourteen, citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening, my name's Bill Seward, I'm the bar chief for the town of North Brentford, and I, I kinda sat here after that long deliberation deciding whether or not to get up and say something, so I need to say something, and that is, as one of the two public safety department heads for the town of North Brentford, my responsibility branches out to include fire and EMS protection for the town. As one of the two public safety department heads, we interact with the North Brentford Police Department on a daily basis, and with that said, I have a vested interest in what happens in the nine-one-one center of the North Brentford Police Department, and I know that there was, there is a commissioner present. I would like to say that it took a lot of tenacity on the part of those individuals that sat on the planning committee, listened to the moans and groans of many, and a lot of those groans were very fruitful information tidbits to get passed along because they have existed there for years. So when it comes to our public safety in our community, I'm not the police chief, but I have a very significant and high-level interest in what happens in one half of that building, and that is the nine-one-one center. I am very intimately involved with the fire marshal's office on a daily basis, therefore, I'm well aware of the living conditions within the police department. So to look at funding to start the process would be most beneficial to our taxpayers. Again, from a public safety standpoint, we can improve the level of public safety to the community by enhancing the facility that North Brentford Police Department has to operate within, and again, I reiterate that I have a vested interest in fifty percent of the public safety in this committee, in this community, and that committee has put forth some information that's most valuable and need to take it to heart, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I'd like to talk about something just real quick. I don't know if it was the last issue of the TOTAC at times, or the one before, but there was a gentleman running for Town Council, who in his editorial made allegations that there were a couple of counselors that were unethical, or corrupt, or something to that effect. And I'd like to just make a statement. I, I've sat here for, on and off, for about eleven or twelve years, I think it'll be twelve years at the end of my term, and for somebody to make allegations like that without having, you know, any kind of proof, or just say what you want, make it up and put it in editorial, I, I can't let it go without saying something about it. I, I've tried my best, I've been here a long time, to keep people's taxes down, to do the right thing, to balance, you know, the money we spend with the value we get as far as education, as far as fire, police, and, you know, I, I did the best I could. And I could honestly say, if they're talking, if that person is talking about me, I challenge that person to, to provide one iota of proof of any unethical, or illegal, or whatever, what have you. I'm, I'm insulted, and I think it's bad politics, and I think it's just trying to say anything to try to win an election, and, and I just think it's wrong, and I just wanted to say something about it.
I wasn't gonna say, but that's a valid point, and, you know, I haven't spent since nineteen eighty-nine off and on, sitting up here and taking part in anything that is any way unethical. First of all, it takes five of us up here to do anything. So, the, the other side better learn how the government works if they want to sit up here and, and be part of it. These claims of things being done unethically, I'll, I'll join you in the challenge. I challenge the other side to come to the table with who and what was unethical up here, and I'll tell you what, I'll be the first one to, to, you know, send them to our ethics committee, or jump down their throat with what they were doing wrong.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't tolerate it in my life, and I certainly don't tolerate it in the time I volunteer up here. If I think somebody's lying to me, good luck to them, and-
I just think it's dangerous to be making those allegations.
That's right, because, you know, people read it, and, and I don't know how many followers the, the other side has on this unethical stuff, but, you know, I, I'll, I'll put my reputation out there that, you know, there has nothing been done on this town council unethical.
It's, it's nonsense, and I challenge to provide the proof.
I'm John Landoff, eight one forty-five Village Street. When I read that article, I got sick. And I know it's none of, these people are not evolved, I know that. But that man is very unethical, and we know who the two despicable people he was talking about, and he should be challenged by the Ethics Commission, we should file a charge against him. If he's gonna be a council member, he's on the wrong path, and we can't use that in this town, because the Republicans and the Democrats were working together, we try hard, we may have a different opinion here, but by March, we cut, we bridge the gap, and we're working together, and it should be that way, because the ultimate deal is, when you're elected, you're trying to work, citizens of this town, the hard-working citizens. And I would be with you, and you, Donald, and I think we should bring this guy to task immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify, Al, you know, when you say the other side, understand that that other side is the person writing the article that doesn't reflect what I, as part of the other party feel, nor I would imagine Joe or Marie either, so.
I, I recognize that, and I have nothing but respect for the three of you guys, we were-
Likewise.
And so do I. And I know that the three of you know that nothing has been done unethical while you guys are sitting here.
I would, I would, absolutely.
I totally agree with that.
I just got one thing, Joe Mascari is, sitting here, listening, I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't really know a lot about politics, I don't know who's on whose party. Al, I agree with a lot of things you said tonight, but I gotta tell you, sitting here listening to the way you attacked Marie, after it was obvious to me that she spent a lot of time, she was prepared, and then you come and tell her it's a dog and pony show, I just have to say something, because I left a bad taste in my mouth, I think that was very disrespectful.
All right, a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
Or is anybody here?
I gotta make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Moved by Councilor, U.C., seconded by Councilor Armond, to move to executive session, including the town manager. I hope I wasn't a-
I am.
Roll call. I just disagree.
I don't care about that. I don't care what's happening.
No, I-
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Bucci?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.